Good evening. Welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for the roll call.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Excuse me, please stand for the invocation. And tonight, we have Captain Mel Vernon of the Santa Maria Band, Santa Maria Band of Mission Indians, who will be helping us with the invocation today.
Are we going to do the invocation now or before, or the flag allegiance?
Uh, the invocation, my apologies. Yes.
Did you say follows?
And then stay standing for the pledge afterwards.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a Native American prayer, kind of a universal prayer. Oh, great Spirit, whose voice I hear in the winds and whose breath gives life to all the world, hear me. I come before you, one of your children. I am small and weak. I need your strength and wisdom. Let me walk in beauty and make my eyes ever behold the red and the purple, and purple sunset. Make my hands respect the things you have made, my ears sharp to hear your voice. Make me wise so that I may know the things you have taught my people, the lesson you have hidden in every leaf and rock. I seek strength, not to be superior to my brothers, but to be able to, to fight my greatest enemy, myself. Make me ever ready to come to you with clean hands and straight eyes, so when life fades as a fading sunset, my spirit may come to you without shame. Amen and bless you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mel. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ryan, would you like to lead us?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you. And we start off with proclamations and presentations, and this is the month of September. And one of the very important proclamations that we have is Constitution Week. And we are so very lucky to have the chapter, the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Santa Margarita Chapter here. And we've got several folks from there. And we've got Regent Jackie Berzens. Jackie, would you please come down and help me do this presentation along with some others members of, of the chapter? Thank you. And this is Jackie.
Thank you very much for inviting us and, and giving us this proclamation because this is very important to the Daughters of the American Revolution. We do this every year. And we would like to invite everybody to come to the mission on Sunday, the 17th, be there about 12:30, quarter till 1:00, when we ring the bells. And everybody across the nation will be ringing the bells at the same time honoring our Constitution, which is very, very important. This is Lisa Howard.
I'm Lisa Howard.
Julie Calvario.
Belle Johnson Bone.
Adele Lancaster.
Thank you. This is a very, very proud tradition of having this chapter in our own city of Oceanside. And this is a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, which is September 17th through September 23rd. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution, founded in 1890, petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Public Law 915 forever guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas each year, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Santa Margarita Chapter, Oceanside, have faithfully joined the city of Oceanside in making this proclamation. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in the city of Oceanside and urge all of our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
We would like...
So what are you giving me here?
This is a poster that the Daughters of the American Revolution sell to our chapters. And we like to take them out to the libraries and city halls and that sort of thing to remind everybody the week of September 17th is Constitution Week so that we don't forget. We need to remember and we need to celebrate it because it's very, very important to us.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll get this on the third floor. Great place for it to be.
Okay. Here's your...
And did you have something else to say?
No, I think that'll...
Okay. I see a piece of paper. Was there something? I just, I just want...
I have left it.
Okay. Well, I just want to say every year, I don't know how many years, I was going to ask you if you remember the year that you began coming to the city of Oceanside and requesting that the city, reminding us every year to make sure that this happened.
1929.
1929.
In Oceanside. And I don't know whether they started back in 1929 doing this. I don't think so because this didn't really start until 1955. But I know that there's, do you know, Adele?
It probably was then, that Santa Margarita started celebrating annually, probably been about 1956.
56?
56.
True, that's...
When the...
Congress.
Yeah.
Presidential proclamation, yes.
The, what if that, they weren't, what did we just say?
Constitution.
The Constitution?
No.
No, no proclamation.
The proclamation. Okay.
When they put it into law, when they start the celebration, the 17th through the 23rd. The poster which she's holding is done...
The poster is done through an annual contest poster, Constitution Week poster. Anyone inside or outside of DAR, there are no age limits, can create a poster and submit it for judging. And so if there's somebody right here who's interested, they can contact Jackie or Santa Margarita and we can make sure that you have, have the information for participating in the contest. This one was created by, who happened to be a DAR member in Illinois, and she went through the, the judging process throughout the states and came out first.
Thank you very much and thank you for continuing the tradition of having a chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution right here in Oceanside. Thank you very much. So yes, it's September, so that means that it's also National Hispanic Heritage Month. So Shema and Manuel Navarro, if you could please come down. I've asked Shema, who does, who teaches Aztec dancing, and Manuel, Manny, who has a classic car club, and you probably have seen some of these throughout Oceanside, to help with this proclamation and its dates. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th every year, honoring the histories, cultures, arts, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, North, Central, and South America, and the Caribbean, bringing pride to our Latino, bicultural families, seniors, and youth. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month it is celebrated today. And whereas Latinos and Latino-Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage, embodying the pioneering spirit of America today, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to faith, family, hard work, and justice. Latinos have lifted our communities and our economy as entrepreneurs, executives, small business owners, community leaders and activists, as well as farmworkers in the fields, and have made contributions in areas such as science, art, music, politics, academia, government, labor, civil rights, and sports. And whereas Latino-owned small businesses are the fastest-growing businesses in America and in Oceanside, starting at a pace 15 times the national average over the last decade. Latinos own more than 3 million American businesses and serve with honor in all branches of the armed forces, continuing a strong legacy of dedication to our country that has seen the Medal of Honor awarded to 60 Latino-Americans. And whereas Latinos began settling in Oceanside and the East Side community in the early 1900s. Early Latino leaders included Lucy, Maria, and Joe Chavez, who championed issues for the Latino community such as paved streets, sewer lines, a park, Laurel Elementary, Jefferson Junior High, and civil rights, with Lucy becoming the first Latina, Latino elected to the Oceanside City Council. Pete Magagna, who was required to attend the Americanization School for his education, served in the armed forces like many young Oceanside Latino men, and after returning home to Oceanside, started the Oceanside Chapter of the American GI Forum. Victor Villasenor, a leading author who wrote about growing up as a Latino in the Oceanside Carlsbad area. Concha Hernandez Green, who mobilized the East Side community against violence with her Steps for Peace movement and who helped organize Partners for Healthy Neighborhoods. These early leaders created the many new Latino leaders that we have today, contributing greatly to the economic and social development and success of our city and citizens and youth. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside. We have so many people that later on in this month and also into October, we are going to be honoring. There, there's so much work that is being done, so much positive, that I have to tell you that everything that has happened has had a positive effect in, from the education to the kids, to the businesses, to having events and businesses in Oceanside. So it's, it's been really, really phenomenal to see the growth in Oceanside, to see the positive growth in Oceanside. My dad came to Oceanside when he was seven in the, in the 30s as a farmworker, and he had a dream to own a home as his parents. He had a dream to see that his kids could be looked after and to be able to provide for them. My mom, who came from, from Zacatecas, her dream was to have education. She had one year of education and she really, really wanted to have been able to do, to go to school. And so that dream that she had ended up being something that she gave to me. So she was able to, she was able to see me not only graduate high school, but college and law school and become an attorney and, and finally a council member. So for our parents, for our elders that we have in the community, and for our youth in the, in this, in the city, in the city of Oceanside, together with the Chamber of Commerce having the, you know, their programs for, for youth, this is a really great time for us to be seeing successes for our youth. And so hopefully with the programs that we have, the city of Oceanside, we are making those differences. Thank you. Thank you. And we have our last proclamation. That is something that we were asked to, to do. It's a new celebration that we have in California, and that is California Native American Day. And I'd like to ask the members of the band, the Santa Maria Band of Mission Indians, to come forward and accept this proclamation. We have, you've already heard from Mel Vernon, who is the captain, which is the leader of the Santa Maria Band of Mission Indians. This is the tribe that was here for 10,000 years. And while they are a landless tribe, the traditions continue here in Oceanside for how many years? Long time.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So I'm going to ask, before I read the proclamation, I'm going to ask that, starting with Diana, that, that we, that they introduce themselves and what they do for the tribe.
Me yuyam, no tong Diana Cordell and noa ta Luseno. I'm retired. I'm an accountant by trade, but I do with the basketry and the culture and the traditions and hopefully to continue the language.
I'm Roberta Estrada, the granddaughter of Ramon Facet, right here from Oceanside. And I'm part of the council and I'm also part of the cultural part of the council.
Meum. Meum, everyone. My name is Marlene Fossilman. I'm also on several different committees in the tribe and was on the council, you know, tried to do everything I can to make this whole council move forward and for the future generations that are coming up. Thank you.
And Carrie's here. I know. Come on, Carrie. Get up here, Carrie. Come on up, Carrie. Carrie Lopez, whose family has been working for many generations to educate, to basically continue the traditions, to ensure that, that everyone knows, remembers or knows about the tribe that was here for, for centuries.
Thank you, Mayor. Our goal is always to respect the past, but celebrate the future and to remind everybody we're still here. We're very much a part of the, the community and want to do everything we can to strengthen the future of this region. This is a beautiful, beautiful piece of earth that we feel responsible in helping steward into its future. So any, anything that we can do for that, we want to recognize State Assemblyman James Ramos, who's the chair of the Native American Caucus, who's responsible for getting a lot of this moving forward, including activities around a project called Missing in California to aid in the statewide effort for missing people, in particular Native American women on and off reservation. And then of course, we applaud the governor's statewide effort with the California Healing Council to discuss remedy and heal from issues of the past. But this day is to recognize California natives statewide, and we'll be back for more specifics on the history of this region.
Thank you. So the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Oceanside recognizes the importance of acknowledging and honoring the rich history, culture, and contributions of California Native Americans. And whereas California Native Americans Day provides an opportunity to celebrate the heritage, tradition, and resilience of California Native American peoples. And whereas California Native American Day offers a chance to educate the community about the diverse California Native American cultures that have shaped our region and our state. And whereas the city of Oceanside aims to promote inclusivity, diversity, and respect for all individuals and communities within our city limits. And whereas California Native American communities have made significant contributions to the growth, development, and progress in the city of Oceanside through their rich traditions, art, language, medicine, environmental stewardship, and more. And whereas recognizing California Native American Day will foster a greater understanding and appreciation of the historical and contemporary issues faced by California Native American communities. And whereas many counties and cities across the state of California have already established California Native American Day as an official observance to honor the indigenous peoples of this land. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby recognize the importance of California Native American Day, celebrated every year on the 4th Friday of September and this year on September 22nd, 2023, and encourage residents, educational institutions, and community organizations to observe California Native American Day through activities, events, and educational initiatives that promote understanding, cultural exchange, and respect for California Native American traditions and contributions. City of Oceanside will strive to incorporate California Native American history, culture, and perspectives into public programs within the city of Oceanside and encourage local businesses and organizations to support California Native American artisans, entrepreneurs, and cultural initiatives through partnerships, collaborations, and sponsorship opportunities. And I have to say that the library, our library, Oceanside Public Library, has done a lot to incorporate Native American culture and having exhibits of the Santa Maria Band of Mission Indians. It's such, it's so, it's so wonderful to be able to have kids understand the history, the very specific history that we have here in Oceanside. So I'd like to give this to you and Mel, and actually Mel, you're the only one that we haven't heard from.
Thank you. Thank everybody here, by the way. And I just wanted to, to share that we are, actually have our POWAW committee working for next year, 224, so we can have a POWAW and get back into gear and, and make our community whole again and welcoming as, as we are. And the, we've been working with the mission, you know, we've actually, I've been to the Hacienda, that big, what is it, the retired assisted living. And it's nice in there, I tell you what. So hopefully we have partnerships going with everybody and it's just appreciation, I just a more awareness of our, of our community and our culture is happening this year than, than I remember before. And so it's welcoming. We were at Luseno Park the other day, taking a look at it and thinking, maybe we should have a concert. There's a lot of grass there and we could do some things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you know, the, the proud traditions of basket weaving, first they start with gathering. That is something that Diana has with her Basket Weaving Association. It's something that's so beautiful that it's, that actually happens here.
Well, I wanted to go from Californian Basket Weaver Association. I do sit on that board for, for that. And I want to give to Esther, I don't know if I have before. This is a video and a DVD that they did with the Californian Basket Weaver Association. They took the different baskets from the whole state of California and picked some through the Autry Museum. And so I'm presenting this to her, you know, as a thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And so please enjoy the exhibits that we have. We have, is it still there at the Mission Branch Library? Please come by and see the exhibit. It is wonderful. And, and boy, to be able to have fry bread at the POWAW, okay? You guys have to think about fry bread, okay? POWAW fry bread. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. We have, and you got the pictures? Next, we have the closed session report. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The city council met at 3:30 in closed session. There was no meeting on item one. Council did meet on item two, a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of Rasul versus City of Oceanside. There is no action under the Brown Act to report at this time.
Thank you. Next are the consent calendar items, items four through 15. Are there, are there any requests to pull from the public?
No request from the public to pull any of the items.
Do we have a motion to approve? There's a motion? There's a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. And I, I forgot to state that item 18 has been removed by staff. So if you were here, this is, the item was a beachfront improvement feasibility study, amendment to that, to that study. So that has been removed for today, will come later. Next is our general items, item number 16, approval of the revised fiscal year 2023, 2024, year five, Measure X spending plan. We have a report by Assistant City Manager Michael Gossman.
Right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Gossman, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on the revised year five Measure X spending plan. This comes at, at the direction of council in March, when we did our fiscal year 23, 24 budget workshop, I was asked to come back and provide some additional plans for monies where we'd had excess revenues, additional savings, where we'd received grants, so we could really maximize benefit to the community when it comes to Measure X. So what I'll be doing is asking for your approval today of the, the year five spending plan. Some background on Measure X. Oceanside voters approved Measure X on November 6th, 2018. This increased the sales tax by a half cent. It went into effect on April 1st, 2019. The half-cent sales tax revenue is slated for enhanced public safety, including services for at-risk youth such as gang prevention, and it improves infrastructure, roads, and it provides for homeless assistance. Measure X also importantly specified that a citizens oversight committee would be appointed to advise the council and review any spending plans. They've reviewed this spending plan and have endorsed it and recommended it to your This is the comparison between what was approved in the budget versus what was revised. You'll note that the changes reflect not just increased revenues and additional savings, it includes the new spending priorities, which I'll go into a little more detail in a second. But the most important change, or one of the bigger changes here, is it includes an award of a large DOD grant for Fire Station One. That's very exciting and allows us to stretch those Measure X dollars even further. As I said, this is a high-level overview and we'll be getting into detail in further slides in a second. So the five categories where we're amending the existing spending plan are in gang diversion slash youth programming, we're adding $200,000 there, we're adding $120,000 for homeless programming, $5,000 to our EMT program, $200,000 for our traffic calming program, and then a one-time $1 million injection into the El Corazon Park Site One development to help keep that construction going. So the gang diversion youth program, that's $200,000, will expand existing programming and include additional funds for sports, the arts, and other cultural activities. This type of programming not only keeps kids, keeps kids engaged in healthy activities, these expand options for kids that are just beyond sports. The $120,000 that we're asking for, for homeless programming is for part-time extra-help provisional professional assistance that under the guidance of our Neighborhood Services Department would help coordinate essential homeless services, resolve housing-related disputes, and foster relationships with landlords so we can continue to house our most vulnerable. The $5,000 that we're requesting for EMT program is $5,000 per year to pay paramedics to act as mentors to interns pursuing their paramedic certifications. This ensures that the department will have the budget available to pay what's required under the existing contract. The enhanced traffic calming program, the additional $200,000 will be focused on schools and parks. We already have a traffic calming program, but this will allow us to focus on areas of greatest concern as far as... of greatest concern, especially when it comes to our kids' safety. I mentioned the funding at Park Site One. This invests $1 million into a project that's, that the total cost is estimated to be about $8 million. The city has identified over $6 million in other sources, so this gets us really close to that total funding, totally funding that Park Site One, a very exciting project for the city. The spreadsheet you see before you is the years five, six, and seven, that's the last three years of the spending plan. It shows, the most important thing is that it indicates that after the sales tax ends in year seven, we estimate having $667,000 left over that could be used to titrate down programs or be put into infrastructure, whatever the council decides. As I mentioned, this plan was vetted and endorsed by the Measure X COC on August 2nd, 2023, and I'm here today asking for your approval, Mr. Man.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We do have one request to speak from the public.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherry Lane, Los Alamo Village. You will be having about $667,000 left over. But first, I want to, you know, compliment staff in the city for some of the road repairs. I've been receiving a lot of complaints around the city by, you know, the number of, shall I say, holes in the ground, or shall I say, potholes, you know? But they're being seen to, and I wanted to say thank you for using some of the funds to stay and address those. But please, use some of these funds to advance the addressing of these issues. There are simple things that can be done. And I think the public looks at that and says, thank you very much if you do.
Thank you very much. No other requests to speak from the public?
No other requests to speak.
Okay, to the council, do we have a motion? Councilmember Joyce?
Just wanted to ask staff, do we have an estimated start time for construction of Park Site One? Or an estimated beginning of the construction of Park Site One?
Honorable Mayor and council members, at this point, we don't have an exact date because we're still trying to line up the funding for it to complete the project. I might well say that it remains probably one of our top priority CIP projects, so we are doing everything we can to get moving on it as quickly as possible.
So according to the presentation, we have seven, if this goes through, we have seven of eight million identified, and the sooner we do it, the less likely that is to keep going up. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Please introduce the ordinance.
There's no ordinance accompanying this item, that's for the next item, Mayor.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. Approve the spending plan, yes.
Yeah. We'll do the introduction on the next item, yes.
Yes, my apologies. Please vote. Turned the page too quickly.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Now on this one, item number 17, there is an ordinance that we are discussing, and that is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with San Diego Metropolitan Transit System, that's MTS, for the administration of four higher vehicle services. Introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 35 of Oceanside City Code to exempt four higher vehicles regulated by MTS from the requirement to obtain a city certificate and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the agreement. So we have a report by Diana McMillan. Nope, no we don't. Should look up before I say.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director. Tonight, I will be presenting item 17 on the agenda. Tonight's staff recommends that city council approve an agreement with San Diego Metropolitan Transit System, or MTS, to administer the taxi cab and four higher vehicle program and amend Chapter 35 of the Oceanside City Code. Currently, city staff regulate taxi cabs and other four higher vehicles. All requirements for this program are defined in Chapter 35 of the city's code. In order to enter into the agreement with MTS, the city needs to amend Chapter 35 to exempt taxi cabs and four higher vehicles regulated by MTS from the requirement to obtain a city license. There are currently 23 four higher vehicle operators registered with the city. Administration of this program requires staff time and resources and brings in very minimal revenue, about $5,000 per year. MTS has agreements with nine San Diego County cities, so Oceanside's participation will help further facilitate uniform administration and regulation across jurisdictional lines. With a recommended amendment to the city code, operators regulated by MTS will not be required to be licensed by the city. In conclusion, staff recommends that city council adopt the resolution and amend the related ordinance. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. We have one request from Jimmy Naught.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherry Lane, Los Alamo Village. On this issue, there is a need, an urgent need, and that is for after-hours service. When there is no bus service, when the other options have been expired due to the time of the day, as in, you know, for GoOceanside, et cetera. When people need to go to a hospital, or to a clinic, or somewhere where they need to go pick up somebody, or to visit someone, or to just get groceries, or, you know, urgent situation. If this cross-jurisdictional situation can help out, and also can take and meet that need, many of our seniors would be appreciative of this. So if that could be considered within this option, it would be very, very appreciated by the senior community. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more further speakers.
Okay, to the council, councilmember Weiss?
Move approval.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance.
Ready for me to title that?
Yes.
Okay, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter 35 of the Oceanside City Code to exempt four higher vehicles regulated by the San Diego Metropolitan Transit System from the requirement to obtain a city certificate.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Go to item number 22, advance written request to reserve time to speak, beginning with A. Do we have G.T.
Good evening, honorable council members and honorable Mayor Sanchez, my name is G.T. Wharton. I'm a District III resident, a small business owner in Oceanside. I've also dedicated my career to children's public health. At the last city council meeting, I spoke to two things that do not mix, plastic pollution and marine life. Today, I'm here to speak about two other things that do not mix, and that is vehicles and pedestrians. Nothing can make this more clear than watching in horror as my neighbor's 16-month-year-old son was struck and killed by a pickup truck in our neighborhood last month. Though the police report for this incident made it seem like this could not have been preventable, there was no alcohol involved, there was speeding was not the issue, but it absolutely was preventable. Over the past four years, I have submitted to the city of Oceanside over 25 complaints about residents using our neighborhood as a long-term street parking, despite the fact that each home has four parking spaces, a two-car garage, two-car driveway. With cars parked on the sidewalk long-term, there is no visibility for pedestrian. Cars cannot see pedestrians crossing the street wherever they may cross. As such, it creates a very dangerous situation. After these many complaints, the traffic enforcement came back to me and told me they would no longer enforce the long-term street parking violations. When I asked why that was, they said it was amounting to harassment since the same residents were the repeat offenders. Well, I followed up with the question, how could the city simply decide to not enforce an ordinance? Their response was that they decide when, how, and if to enforce ordinances all the time. I responded, well, if that is the case, we need to fly a banner above the building that says, we'll enforce it when we feel like it. I want to fast forward to last month's devastating child fatality. Lo and behold, a large pickup truck that was long-term parked on the street at the scene of the accident blocked the driver from being able to see the 16-month-year-old toddler, or 16-month-old toddler. That same truck has been parked in the same spot for six years, it's never moved except for street sweeping day. That same truck, I reported over a dozen times to the city, they eventually stopped caring, they eventually stopped enforcing it. By the time the driver could even see the toddler in the middle of the road, it was too late. There is no reaction time in the world that could have saved that child's life. Now even at designated crosswalks in my neighborhood and throughout this city, cars can street park right to the very edge of the ADA ramp of the official crosswalk. That means that in a designated crosswalk, cars cannot see pedestrians with enough reaction time to stop safely for them. I asked City of Oceanside's traffic engineer to please come to our neighborhood many times. She finally came herself and visited our neighborhood, and after two years of back-and-forth, dozens of requests denied, our neighborhood finally received three small, little red curb areas, little red curb areas, or about one-tenth of the minimum that was needed to make our neighborhood crosswalk safe. This process that I'm talking about is called daylighting. It entails prohibiting vehicles to park near crosswalks to increase pedestrian visibility. It's apparently a process that is completely foreign to Oceanside. Separately, I also requested a speed bump in my neighborhood two years ago, but I was told by the city that my neighborhood was not listed in a large backlog of areas that had been earmarked for traffic calming measures. That request for the speed bump was denied. Now, as you all know, drivers actually just drive as fast as they feel comfortable. Long straightaways like the one in my neighborhood invite speeding regardless of the posted speed limit. Physical traffic calming measures, not just lower speed limits, are the most effective way to reduce dangerous driving. Not even one after, one week after this tragedy in my neighborhood, a teenager was speeding through the neighborhood, lost control of his car, wrecked two other cars parked on the street. And I just want to put in perspective how outdated city policy is on this matter. I reported to the city a bus stop on Vista Way, on Rancho Del, near Rancho del Oro, where bus riders have to literally jaywalk across five lanes of speeding traffic just to get to the bus stop. There's no crosswalk there, there's no stop sign, and the street goes over a hill, so visibility is poor. The response from the city, mind-boggling. An installation of a crosswalk in that area would disrupt the flow of traffic. Now, I want to just listen to these two sentences really carefully. One, I'm going to sleep well tonight knowing that Oceanside has really great flow of traffic. Or two, I'm going to sleep well tonight knowing Oceanside is safe for our residents and our children. And I would ask politely for one extra minute since the gravity of this topic.
Could you wrap it up, sir?
Can I have one more minute, please?
No. Actually, you're over 17, 18 seconds, and you had five minutes.
Well, I'm asking the city to please think about enstating something closer to Carlsbad's Safe Streets Together campaign. We cannot wait for another tragedy like this to be called to action. It is our duty-
Thank you.
-and it's our right as citizens to do what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Madison, we're going to get our IT person to pull up your presentation, so that way you don't have to search around for it.
All right. All right, thank you. So I'm Todd Madison, I'm a happy resident of Oceanside since 2001. I think I've met all of you at one time, I live in Peters area. Here, I have to stop and thank him for giving me a few tips during the Great Rancho del Oro Streetlight debate a few years ago, very much. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the importance of quality schools in our district, our community, the need for everyone, perhaps most importantly, our council members, to be part of the effort to promote improvement in Oceanside Unified Schools. I realize the city has no direct authority over the school district, but I think our council would take an interest in something so vital to our community. When I moved here, I had no clue. My kids would think I have no clue still, but I admit I paid no attention at all to the importance of schools. Our oldest was a year old, while house hunting, I had this weird idea that we were looking for a big kitchen and a large closet in the bedroom. My wife had different ideas. She insisted that we had, the only thing that counted was buying a house in the Ivy Ranch Elementary School District area. So Ivy was a National Blue Ribbon School in 2001, that's all that mattered, really. I'm glad she paid attention, it was a great decision, our kids got an excellent education in the Wildcat Corridor, a bunch of wonderful teachers. The same decision is being made by families every single day, and for the good of the community, we need to keep them making that choice, to live in Oceanside. Having good schools is not only important to our kids, but it's important to, it's directly related to home value. Home values drive higher property tax revenue, buying cribs and changing tables for those homes increases sales tax revenue. Both give the city more money to create a better place for all of us to live. While my kids were small, I was out working, hunting the buffalo six days a week. My wife was the Madison family ambassador to the school, she was involved in everything. Then I got a little bit extra time, my background as an executive and CEO means I know a little bit about budgets and finance. Prop 30 passed, taxes were going up to fund better education, the OUUSD budget showed revenue rising, but very little of that was being spent on actually improving education. I started going to board meetings, often presenting analysis of the financials. The district invited me to join their budget, our LCAP committee. Several good people at the parent advisory meeting talked me into helping lead that group, which I did for several years. I spent four years on the El Camino High Site Council. I've spoken in front of the OUUSD Board over 100 times, as Eric can tell you. At one time, as you can see here, the district actually appreciated that involvement. During that time, funding per student has skyrocketed at a rate three times faster than inflation, three times, but academic performance has barely budged. Last year, funding reached an immense peak while academics dropped to an all-time low. Barely 41% of Oceanside kids are proficient in English, a miserable 29% proficient in math, according to the state dashboard. OUUSD receives over a half-million dollars per classroom. Never in recorded history have they gotten so much money, and never in recorded history have they done so badly educating our kids. We have a crisis in education. Parents are not happy about the damage being done to their kids' future, as well as our community. More than ever, they've been stepping up to express that at school board meetings. In my career, I was responsible for customer service at a billion-dollar company. Customer complaints happened, I personally talked thousands, hearing their complaints was disappointing, but it was also a learning experience. What could we do to address them and make it better? OUUSD's response to this, cut off the ability for parents to provide input and hide in the dark. Just in the last year, they've cut off the ability of parents to give presentations at meetings like this one, they limited comment on specific agenda items, in the last meeting, they stopped livestream, plunging those meetings into the dark. Then, from behind that curtain, they dropped the guillotine on public input, revising the comment rules to further limit comment time to three minutes for the entire agenda on all agenda items. Not three minutes per item, but three minutes total for everything on the agenda. They say democracy dies in darkness, the OUUSD district and board certainly seem composed of vampires. The results are obvious, enrollment is dropping rapidly, parents are no longer consider the quality of schools a reason to live here. How long before that impacts our home? How long before that impacts our home value? As I said, the city has no direct authority. However, you all certainly have the attention and respect of your constituent. You could help highlight the problem and urge OUUSD to take serious steps to solve it. Concerned city councils have sent letters to their school boards. There are concerned council members who attend board meeting. I'm here to urge our council to get involved before it's too late.
Thank you.
Take a stand, insist that Oceanside Unified take immediate and concrete action to restore-
Thank you, sir.
...its reputation, and let the people speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Newton?
There was a typo on, on the agenda. It's actually Richard Newton.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Richard, sorry. So my timer is not working, so I have to rely on Zeb. Yeah, it's still frozen. Oh, there it is. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Newton.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public, I'd like to follow up on the August 30th Housing Workshop. The first speaker was Housing Commissioner Ron Voss, who cited studies that affordable housing does not raise the cost of housing for others. This may be true in the narrowest sense, but only if other homebuyers are not subsidizing the affordable units. Housing is never free. There are costs to material, labor, and land. Someone always has to pay. If it is not the other homeowners in that project, then it is another deep pocket such as taxpayers. So there is some sleight of hand in the research cited by Commissioner Voss, and he misses the bigger picture. Sadly, he was not alone. Housing Commissioners Inez Williams and Beatrice Palmer also argued for more affordable housing without acknowledging the costs of such policies. We know from economics that there are always at least two sides to any transaction. Every dollar received by a business is a dollar spent by a customer. Every tax dollar received by our government is a dollar paid by a taxpayer. So this is so true that the principle of double-entry technique is used by accountants. We've all seen that when we see an accounting statement with two columns, debits and credits, that all is balanced to the penny, such as an ASCR statement. As Investopedia states, "Every financial transaction has an equal and opposite effect in at least two different accounts." So if one person is getting housing they didn't pay for, then someone else is paying for housing they are not getting. I would think that housing commissioners, as people of responsibility and authority, would be cognizant of that fact. Sadly, it seems they are not. Instead, they seem to be abusing their positions of authority to act as advocates for housing instead of setting rational policy. At that meeting, I stated, "If you support affordable housing, then you support a form of slavery." The crowd laughed, but sadly missed the point. To word it differently, studies have shown that total taxes paid by Americans add up to about 40% of their income. This means that Americans, on average, work almost five months per year for free, having their wages and wealth taken from them by taxes. Now, taxes are a part of life and are necessary, but only to maintain common government functions. Redistributing your wealth to others against your will via compulsory taxes means you are working for another individual for free. That is slavery. So let's focus on compassion, compassion for those who work hard and play by the rules. Let them keep more of their earnings. Perhaps if we lowered tax burdens and left more money in the citizens' pockets, people could proudly afford, afford their own housing. It starts by pushing back against poor government policies. Of the 45 people who spoke at the Housing Workshop, only four spoke against affordable housing. As one speaker noted, we four were the outliers. Yet, when one considers that Oceanside has approximately 200,000 residents, the outliers may very well be the 41 people at the workshop asking the government to provide them with housing, as the rest of Oceanside took no interest. Please don't conflate homelessness with the issue of affordable housing. They are separate and distinct. Those who are chronically homeless, often for years, are people who have elected to do drugs and made other self-destructive choices. They ignore efforts needed to secure housing, such as obeying the laws and holding a job. The homeless are a separate and distinct group from the people that are employed, law-abiding individuals who find it difficult to meet their expenses. The solutions for these two distinct groups will logically be two separate and distinct policy. Please do not attempt to use affordable housing policies to solve the homeless crisis. I was truly saddened to see how many people wanted the government to pay for their housing. Citing the last good Democrat president, "Ask not what you can do for your country, ask what your country can do," I'm sorry, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." That was John F. Kennedy in 1961. We witnessed something much bigger than housing policy last week. We witnessed the decline of America as people shamelessly demanded that the government give them stuff instead of being financially independent, even if that meant simply working a second job or making cost-cutting economic prices. The only exception should be for veterans. From a people who fought two world wars to a people who demand a home with an ocean breeze, this is so sad to watch on a decline. You, as policymakers, can fight this. Provide only the minimum amount of affordable housing required by your Sacramento masters and fight for local control of our town. Speak up for rational policies and extol the virtues of self-reliance and frugality. Councilman Joyce, as I pointed out to you when you were school board member, we need to teach people financial literacy. The concepts are easy. Spend less than you make, invest what you save, and stay out of trouble with the law. Do these, and your financial success will take care of itself. Then you can live wherever you want, and you can help society by not being a burden on others. Have those lessons been introduced into the school curriculum?
Thank you. So, item number 25, adoption of an ordinance approving updates to the city's military equipment use policy as required by Assembly Bill AB 481.
Move adoption.
There's a motion? Second?
We do have a speaker on this item.
My apologies.
Richard Newton?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public, this issue of the militarization of our police and military equipment was brought up, I believe, on August 23rd, and some of us raised concerns. And one of the ones that I had dealt with, the fact that the Oceanside Police Department has 15 submachine guns, MP5s. I asked why we have them and what would be a scenario in which those would be utilized by civilian police force. I didn't get a good answer. The answer I got was that we've had them in our armory since 1995 and a shrug of the shoulders. Surprisingly, after that, Google knows everything, YouTube video appeared on my feed, and it's an MP5, is the type of machine gun the Oceanside PD has. MP5 mag dump ambush on a guy who shot at Utah County deputies, that's the title of it. It's only four minutes and 12 seconds long. In this video, they were trying to capture a guy who was running for the police. It was a pursuit, and one of the officers got in front of this, this individual, took out a submachine gun and unloaded the magazine on the cars that was driving by. There were other cars in the area. There were cars going in their direction. There could have been other civilians who could have been hurt. It strikes me as an inappropriate use of a machine gun in a civilian environment. And so one of the things I'd like to ask is that you said, "City council members, take a look at this video when you get a chance, and perhaps at the next meeting, when you've had a chance to look at it." I'd like an assurance publicly that OPD will not use these machine guns in such a manner. There are other techniques to delay or to detain a suspect when they're in pursuit. The other thing I would like is a public statement as to what scenario would such a submachine gun be used? Would it be in a firefight? And these are in armory, so we're chasing somebody who has a submachine gun. We go back to the armory. We get the submachine guns. We corner them. We shoot them. It's important to note that the job of the police, the constitutional role of the police, who I respect very much, is to detain suspects. And as long as people can surrender to the police, to a police officer, and be assured that they won't be injured, our system will work. But if we start turning people into Swiss cheese, then people will rationally want to resist the police, and this will create more problems down the road. Again, I am somebody who supports the police. I would just like to get clarity on this policy as to when we would use a submachine gun against civilian suspects that are innocent until proven guilty. Personally, from that video, what I saw of it, I thought it was a very irresponsible use of a submachine gun. And again, I'd encourage everybody to look at that video. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. There is a motion for adoption and a second. Mr. Mellon, please, excuse me, did you want to speak? Councilmember Joyce.
I just had a question, because that, it did come up with us having several pieces of equipment that are a little bit older, and we had them in, in stock. Is there a process that we have for retiring equipment when we no longer deem it necessary to keep it? Oh, Chief Sattler, yes, that'd be great. I don't know, I don't know if City Manager Borrego had that, or, and I apologize for the-
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Chief Sattler, Oceanside PD. So weaponry that we do have, that we no longer keep, we can sell them back to the manufacturer where we purchased them from. But a lot of the weaponry that we do have, we keep them for as long as they work. And if they get to a point where we find something else more advanced that we want to purchase, we can still use the old weaponry for training purposes. So it's not as though we have a lot of weaponry that we get rid of very often. We, we actually keep it for quite some time. We have weapons that we still, my sidearm, I've had this since I started in 2001, just to give you an example of that. But if, if we did want to get rid of it, sidearms, we can sell them to the officers that they were issued to. But if it was something like a submachine gun or something like that, we can sell them to a firearms dealer.
Okay, there's, Mr.-
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mellon, please title the ordinance.
This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside, California, approving updates to Chapter 25, Section 25.8 to the Oceanside City Code entitled Military Equipment Policy.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Before to, before going to the 6 o'clock, I'd like to call. Item number 26 was the adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Oceanside City Code to support the reduction of marine debris and litter caused by single-use plastic and polystyrene products.
Move approval?
There's a motion to adopt and a second. Mr. Mellon, please title the ordinance.
Thank you. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 13, Article 4 of the Oceanside City Code to support the reduction of marine debris and litter caused by single-use plastic products and single-use polystyrene products.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Items now under public hearing items, item 6 o'clock, that are on the 6 o'clock time certain. Item 19, adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment. That's GPA 21-00002, to re-adopt the revised 2021-2029 housing element in substantial compliance with state housing law. The applicant is our City of Oceanside. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
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 Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
All correspondence related to this item have already been forwarded to the City Council prior to the hearing.
Right. Thank you very much. So we're going to begin with the presentation by Mr. Demowski, Principal Planner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Rob Demowski, Principal Planner with the Planning Division, and here this evening to present the revised housing element. The request is for a general plan amendment seeking City Council re-adoption of the revised 2021-2029 housing element in substantial compliance with state housing law. In accordance with state law, the city is required to update the housing element of the general plan every eight years with current six cycle effective from April 15th, 2021 to April 15th, 2029. A primary function of the housing element is to identify the housing needs of all Oceanside residents and establish goals and strategies for developing and preserving an adequate supply of housing for all income levels. The housing element places emphasis on affordable housing opportunities for lower-income households and special needs groups. Housing law requires the city to adopt an updated housing element and submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development for a compliance review to affirm the housing element is substantially compliant with state housing law. The draft housing element was submitted to HCD in April of 2021. To meet the statutory deadline for adopting a housing element, the City Council adopted the housing element on June 16th, 2021, with the understanding that staff would continue to work with HCD to address any compliance items. The housing element ultimately underwent four rounds of reviews and was deemed substantially compliant by HCD on August 18th of 2023. The housing element consists of four key components. The housing needs assessment evaluates Oceanside's housing supply, population, and household characteristics and special needs groups such as farm labor housing, homeless persons, and people with disabilities. The housing site's inventory identifies both vacant and non-vacant land throughout the city that is suitable for residential development and has adequate capacity to meet the city's future housing needs during the cycle. The constraints analysis identifies both governmental and non-governmental constraints that potentially impact housing development. Examples include zoning codes and city regulations, physical constraints or environmental constraints on properties, infrastructure constraints, and construction costs. And the housing action plan includes the housing goals and policies, housing programs, and objectives to implement important housing-related issues during the six cycle. State housing law requires all regions in the state to accommodate the fair share of housing, known as the regional housing needs assessment. As part of the San Diego region, Oceanside received arena allocation of 5,443 units, distributed into four income levels, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate based on a, the San Diego median income. And the city receives credit for housing projects built, entitled, or under review since June 30th, 2020, and this includes the number of projected accessory dwelling units that will be built over the, the next eight years based on current development trends. As shown in the middle table, the city received a total credit of 3,044 units at various income levels and has a remaining RENA of 2,456. To meet this, the city's remaining RENA obligation of 2,446, 56 units, the housing site's inventory must include an inventory of land that is suitable for residential development with adequate capacity to accommodate the 2,456 units. The site's inventory focuses future housing development on infill and redevelopment opportunities within the city's major transit corridors, including Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard, and Vista Way, as part of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Specific Plan, as well as the Coast Highway Corridor within the boundaries of the pending, in Coast Highway Center District. Sites in these corridors are primarily zoned residential and commercial and allow for mixed-use development. Standalone residential is also permitted in certain situations in the corridor on sites that provide a certain percentage of affordable housing. The overall site's inventory contains a total of 6,215 sites with adequate sites to accommodate 4,107 lower-income units. The inventory includes a surplus above of sites to accommodate 3,759 units to ensure there is a no-net loss of RENA sites during the housing cycle. And this is important, in the event the city loses potential housing sites, the surplus will allow the city to maintain an adequate capacity without the need to rezone any additional sites for residential development. Certain programs in the housing element were revised to address HCD's remaining compliance items. Program 5, accessory dwelling units, was updated to affirm the city's commitment to streamlining and encouraging the construction of ADUs as a source of housing for a variety of income levels throughout the city. Program 7 details action the city will take to ensure there are adequate sites throughout the city to accommodate RENA, and per Assembly Bill 1397, the city was required to complete those rezones within one year of the statutory deadline, and the city implemented such rezones in March 2023 by adopting a zone amendment to Article 30 to increase the mixed-use allowance within the commercial corridor sites in the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan, from 29 ADUs an acre to a range of 35 to 43 dwelling units an acre. The San zoning text amendment also implemented Program 8, which incorporates provisions for standalone multifamily on residential projects on commercial sites designated for lower-income units within the corridors, and a buy-ride approval process for projects that provide a minimum of 20% affordable housing. And in response to Assembly Bill 2339, Program 11, Special Needs Housing, was revised to include an action to allow emergency shelters in a zone district that allows residential development. The city intends to meet this requirement by providing five vacant commercial sites within the boundaries of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor plans and to eliminate the bed count in order to provide enough capacity for potential future sites. And the City Council will have an opportunity to review these sites as part of the adoption process for the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan. And finally, Program 20 was updated to thoroughly address a permanently furthering fair housing, short for AFFH. Assembly Bill 686 amended housing law to establish an obligation for local governments to take meaningful actions that overcome patterns of segregation and remove barriers that restrict opportunity for persons of color and- of segregation and remove barriers that restrict opportunity for persons of color, persons of a disability, and other protected classes. The city's program focuses on fair housing for all community members, encourages housing mobility and opportunities, which focus on improving quality of life for residents of low-income communities, and supporting access to high-resourced neighborhoods, which are generally characterized by better education, employment, safe and decent housing, lower crime rates, and access to transportation and other recreational amenities, food, as well as a healthy environment. As noted in the housing element, the city only has one high-resourced tract, and one tract is identified as high poverty and segregation. The remainder of the city consists of moderate and low-resourced tracts. Overall, various neighborhoods are diverse and well-integrated, and because the city is generally considered as low to moderate resource, the city's strategy in the housing element and the AFFH program is to focus future growth and improvements within the corridors to elevate the quality of life in low and moderate source areas. The revised housing element contains goals, policies, and programs to help facilitate housing opportunities for all Oceanside residents at various income levels. Aligning with the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan and the Coast Highway and Center District, the housing sites' inventory will guide future housing growth through infill redevelopment within transit-served areas, and will place an emphasis on elevating the quality of life. By addressing all compliance items from HCD, the revised housing element was deemed substantially compliant with HCD in accordance with state housing law, and upon readoption, the housing element will be submitted to HCD for final review and certification. As such, staff recommends that the City Council by motion adopt a resolution approving General Plan Amendment 210002 to readopt the revised 2021-2029 housing element in substantial compliance with state housing law. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public? This is a public hearing, but did anyone sign up?
Yes, we have two advance written requests to speak on this item. Our first speaker is Kelly O'Neill, to be followed by Jimmy Knott. And while Mrs. O'Neill is walking up to the podium, I've just been informed that we're having some issues with the audio. So if you're at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone so K O C T could also hear you, as well as our audience listening in on Zoom. Thank you. And it's all you, Kelly.
Ms. O'Neill?
I'm Kelly O'Neill, and Oceanside is my hometown. And this adoption, or to the revised housing element and the whole housing element, I say no. I say no to this housing plan, the whole general plan, because this general plan and housing plan bows down to the state and spits in the face of the major stakeholders of Fire Mountain, Loma Alta, South Oceanside, North Oceanside, Eastside, and the Valley. We are the major stakeholders of this land, not the state. Yet you roll over and allow the state to dictate how our neighborhoods should look like and how we should live. None of you are upholding the city charter. Your housing plan looks a lot like the state housing plan. It has smart this, smart that, smart cities written all over it, and it puts AI's opinion above our own, the landowners, the locals of Oceanside. The California State Housing Plan of 2022, the HCD says, even in a time of economic growth and record employment, too many Californians are experiencing the squeeze of stagnant wages and the rising price of building block necessities such as housing, healthcare, and education. That was what they said. But first of all, this is a lie. Economic growth and record employment? Are you kidding me? We are not in an economic growth. We weren't even in an economic growth in 2022. This is a lie. And second, our building block necessities. I hate it how you all constantly come up with new phrases to manipulate us into compliance. Our building block necessities have been hijacked. Our healthcare, education, and neighborhoods have been hijacked by psychopaths who want to inject us with poison, run us out of our neighborhoods, and mutilate our children. These psychopaths, when we don't leave our neighborhoods, and when they can't run us out, they shoot microwaves at our homes like they did to the people of Lahaina and Paradise, California. They turn our homes to ash. These are the people you want to join hands with. Your so-called housing plan has the World Economic Forum written all over it, and this isn't... Yeah, and I'm going to leave it with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Council, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane, Los Alamos. First off, there's a few words from some of the public. What are we doing replying to the state? What are the real data type statistics? Is it all false? What's being omitted? What are the objectives? And what does this report to address and what doesn't? What's the template, and what's the failure to communicate in this? Sitting down, thinking about it, and seeing what staff had to say today, it's missing a growing population, and that population is senior. The existing senior population, which is under continuous threat. The latest example is an example of Trico Mobile Estates. People there own their mobile home, but the park now is up for sale. It's going to be sold out from underneath these seniors. And what is the city doing? Virtually nothing. They're going to probably follow the same example of a couple of parks here in Oceanside, where it was easier to just close the park, pay a fine of $100 per space, and be on their way building something new in the park. City has not used this charter amendment to take and up that fine to $10,000 per space if it had some teeth. The city doesn't like teeth, so it pulls them. It doesn't put in community impact fees for the cost of rehousing, for relocation, for homelessness that it could take and put into the community and put on the backs of the taxpayers. Also, it doesn't take in consideration for the loss of revenue to local businesses that these seniors have put in for decades. So what does this housing element really do? Rubber stamp? Maybe. We need to provide protection for existing housing. We need to take and provide the security seniors need. Their whole life investment is in your hands. Are we going to listen to the staff? Yes. Let's do something.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. This is a public hearing. You do not have to have actually signed up to speak on this item. If you wish to address the council on this item, please stand, approach the podium, give your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. I see no one rising. I'm going to go ahead. Oh, sorry. Yes. I was looking on the other side. Give your name and speak for three minutes.
My name is Ryan Jones. I lived in Oceanside sporadically throughout my life, North County in general, but I spent all four years of high school living off of Villarancho, going to El Camino High School. So very dedicated to this city and really love it with my... I love it more than any other city I've lived in. And I would just like to go back over this housing element and address the fact that I liked everything that I heard. I really appreciated the idea of mixed-use residential housing in these corridors of high traffic. I thought the idea that there might be more walkable and easy to access public transit was very nice. I also thought it was good. We recognize that maybe some of these housing goals for very low and low housing, as I said, haven't really been met. We had a credit for 1,268, apparently. That only went down to 1,142, a difference of 126, which isn't that much of a decrease, which I believe we need. And generally, it sounds like this plan to address the housing elements, that is, we've assessed the needs of Californians for housing. We've seen how much onsite inventory we have, how much more we need to create, as well as, if we do more analysis into zoning and other constraints. I believe this mixed-use residential housing is actually positive for our city, and this affordable housing is incredibly necessary, especially for my generation that's struggling to break into this housing market at all. Buying is completely out of our range of vision, and renting seems unfeasible as well. I mean, we have people who are like me, who spent all four years of high school in Oceanside, and then I lived for a bit in Texas with my mom, and now I live in Escondido with my grandma. I don't live in Oceanside anymore, and I couldn't imagine that possibility for me or anyone in my current generation. I know people who want to move out, who have jobs that saved and planned to move out, but inflation kind of ran past them, and there's no housing in Oceanside, and now they have to move. So I mean, as previous speaker said, of having all of this housing go for seniors, I think that's definitely where we're currently headed. I think we are headed towards housing that's only for seniors. But unfortunately, this young generation of workers, of the future movers and shakers in the world, going to Miracosta, trying to make our mark, who really love Oceanside, we're not going to be able to stay here. We're not going to be able to live here without this kind of affordable housing, and this kind of sounds like the thing that we'd really like. Fortunately, I'm the only person my age here, so I guess I'll have to speak for all of us for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time, address the council on this item? Anyone else? Okay, I'm looking at both sides of the room now. Okay. I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing. And Mr. Borrego, I know that there have been a lot of negotiations with the state regarding getting our housing element certified, that is, in substantial compliance. What would happen if it wasn't?
There's actually pretty serious repercussions if we don't have a certified housing element. Probably the most significant and real is many state funding programs are tied to a jurisdiction having a certified housing element. So as it exists even right now, we're not able to tap into certain state funding resources because of our lack of a certified housing element. There's also remains a risk for what's called a builder's remedy project, which essentially makes cities that don't have certified housing elements vulnerable to applications that we would be forced to approve without any sort of public review process, as long as we have a certified housing element, which is not certified by the state. And so that's a real risk involved, and something that we're very mindful of. And now, assuming the council takes action tonight to support this, we will immediately send it back up to the state for final certification, which should put us in good standing.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Keim?
Real quick, I wanted to clarify to the audience. It was a priority for me when we did this, to keep our neighborhoods intact, our single-family neighborhoods. So just want to confirm with staff, we didn't change zoning in our single-family neighborhoods with this, did we?
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor Keim, that is correct. Existing zoning in single-family neighborhoods, any sites outside the corridors were not included as part of those rezones. And there are some laws that do allow additional units, such as accessory dwellings or SB9 within existing neighborhoods, but those are not part of any city-initiated rezoning as part of the housing element.
That was clear direction from the council. We wanted to keep the single-family neighborhoods the way they are. And I think this is something important to illustrate to the state. So we have 2,400, essentially, housing units we still need to account for. So we can do that without changing the zoning in our single-family neighborhoods, as we've shown here, correct?
Deputy Mayor, that is correct.
And yet with that, the state is still going to mandate SB9 and 10, a density bonus in those different neighborhoods. So that's the frustrating part for me, is we've shown that in our corridors, we can accommodate for the RINA numbers, yet we're still going to get these projects forced into our city. And it's one of my frustrations as we make these plans. So, thank you.
So even before SB9, SB10, we have always been able to have a plan for addressing our housing needs, our RINA numbers. There was never a time that the City of Oceanside was refusing to build, refusing to ensure that we had housing at all levels. It is now that we, with these new laws, that we seem to be having problems in ensuring that we have available housing for all levels. I've never seen a vacancy rate so low in my entire lifetime of 1% or less. I've never seen that. I've never seen a time when our young folks are just thinking that this is going to be an impossibility to be able to buy a home in Oceanside. So it's... These are difficult times. I know that there is a movement to try to gain back the rights of cities for local control, and I do hope it gets on the ballot. I know that there's some folks that like what the state is doing. I, for one, do not. So I'm going to go ahead and move adoption of the resolution. I do not want what would possibly happen to us. That is, a developer would want to start building by right against our plan. So Councilmember Joyce?
Just to go back to a couple of things that were within the presentation. Have we met our requirements for building above-moderate homes for the cycle from 2021 through the year 2029?
Mayor Sanchez, Councilmember Joyce, based on the number of projects that have been entitled and under review, we have satisfied our obligation for above-moderate housing, and we do not need any additional units to meet the remaining RINA need in that category.
So it is extremely striking that half of the allocation was above-moderate, and that half of the allocation has been completely met through... What is this? 2023? Two years into an eight-year cycle? So do we have any tools by which that we can balance the scales and build more affordable housing versus above-moderate?
Councilmember Joyce, the housing sites' inventory does include several sites that do allow lower-income housing. And lower-income housing can also be built on sites that are identified for moderate, above-moderate. There's no restriction on housing taking place. The housing element law generally, moderate or above-moderate housing takes care of itself, and the focus is really on identifying sufficient capacity for the lower-income categories, which we have done so through the rezoning to allow the mixed-use allowance of 35 to 43 dwelling units. And we do have more than sufficient sites to accommodate housing in a variety of locations, as well as the new provision for standalone residential, as well as a buyright approval process for projects that decide to pursue a 20% affordable component.
The Program 8 buyright approval with 20%, is that just in the corridors that are identified, or is it across the whole city?
That applies to... Please allow me to verify really quickly.
Because we haven't adopted the Smart and Sustainable Corridors yet, so I don't know if that just applies to that area or not.
Councilmember Joyce, as outlined in the staff report, the rezones that were completed in March accounted for the housing sites' inventories, which are the same sites that are going to be included in the Smart and Sustainable Corridor specific plan. So it does account for the corridors.
So we identified sites where 4,107 low-income units could be built. There's no guarantee that they're going to be built there, right? I mean, we struggle to get folks to build these just in general, but they could be built there, and that's what's required by HCD? Is that correct?
That is correct. We're obligated to demonstrate capacity, and sites that are generally developable and have minimal constraints, but we're not obligated to actually build the units on those sites. those, those sites.
Okay. I just want to communicate clearly with the public that because these sites are identified, that doesn't mean we're going to all of a sudden start building more very low or low-income. We took some action last month to start moving in that direction, but it seems extremely clear from these numbers that we have to be very aggressive if we intend to actually build low-income housing in the city. That is all the questions I have. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a, a motion and a second. No other requests to speak? Ms. Mellon?
This is just a resolution, Mayor. I don't need to dattle. You can vote.
Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 20 is adoption of a resolution approving a regular coastal permit. That's RRP 22-00002, to allow the demolition of an existing 600-square-foot single-family residence and associated single-car garage to be replaced by a new 2,490-square-foot residence with an associated two-car garage at 615 South Myers Street, Harden Residence. And the applicant is Carol Harden. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from commissioners regarding their constituent contacts and/or correspondence.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff?
None.
None.
All right. Mr. Secretary, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not had any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We're going to begin with testimony by Dane Thompson, Planner for the City of Oceanside.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Dane Thompson with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting item number 20 tonight, Harden Residence Project. Staff recommends that the CDC adopt a resolution approving a regular coastal permit to allow the demolition of an existing single-family home to be replaced with a new 2,490-square-foot residence at 615 South Myers Street. The project site is located on South Myers, block north of Wisconsin, within the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, which is why we're here today for a single-family Here is a visual of the project site, so you can get acquainted. This project is a request for a regular coastal permit to demolish the existing 600-square-foot single-family home that has been described as uninhabitable. The applicant is proposing to then construct a new custom home, which is just shy of 2,500 square feet, which would have a two-car garage, a second-story deck and covered patio, and quality landscaping provided throughout the site. The project has been described as a modern industrial style, with a glass foyer at the entrance, smooth white stucco walls, and a metal seam roof. There's a projection off the side of the building that acts as a visual accent and provides privacy to the large side yard. The project complies with the development standards of the D5 sub-district and is compatible with the policies of the local coastal program, as it would not impact public views, public parking, or public access to the beach. The project is also consistent with the downtown residential guidelines, including providing enhanced landscaping, keeping the building form simple, and using a variety of materials. The applicant's complied with the city's notification policy by posting the required yellow sign, and the city sent out the required mailers. To date, no comments have been received from the public. On July 26, the Downtown Advisory Commission voted unanimously for this body to, to recommend approval to this body. With that, staff recommends that the CDC adopt a resolution approving regular coastal permit, RRP 2202, to allow the demolition of an existing 600-square-foot single-family residence and associated single-car garage to be replaced by a new 2,490-square-foot residence with an associated two-car garage at 615 South Myers Street.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public, written requests to speak from the public?
We do not have any on this item.
All right. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the council to hear from you on this item. You do not have to have filled out a, checked in to be able to speak. So if you do wish to address the council on this item, please rise, approach the podium, and give your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. I see no one rising. Go ahead and close this public hearing, and go, come to the, back to the council. Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. No other comments, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item number 21, last of the public hearing items, is adoption of a resolution approving development plan RD 22-00006, and density bonus DB 23-00001, for the demolition of two single-family homes and the construction of a six-story mixed-use project consisting of 180 apartment units, including 18 deed-restricted lower-income units, and 4,996 square feet of commercial space located on the northwest corner of Pierview Way and North Horn Street. The proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Article 19, Section 15332, Infill Development Projects, Class 32 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Quality Act, excuse me. This is the Sunsets Mixed Use Project. The applicant is Suts, Sunsets LP. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from commissioners regarding constituent contacts and/or correspondence.
Staff, the applicant's representative, and we received a flurry of letters this afternoon.
Staff, applicant, and same emails.
Right, the, the emails.
I spoke with the representative, talked with staff. I also heard from constituents.
Staff, applicant, public.
Right, I did speak with staff, actually, about this item as well. All right. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Yes, we received three letters of correspondence just a couple of minutes before the meeting, and after the meeting, from Dan Nybom of the Lightfoot Planning Group, another one from Dan Leibon from the Lightfoot Planning Group, and another letter from our, from BPG, Birdseye Planning Group. And those communications have been distributed to the council and are entered into the record.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a presentation by Natalie Vaskis, Associate Planner.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
It's Natalie, isn't it?
Natalie.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
I have the same, same problem, the H and Esther.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I am Natalie Vaskis with the Development Service Department, and I'm here to discuss Agenda Item 21 for the development of a mixed-use, 180-unit density bonus project located on the corner of Pierview Way and North Horn Street. Staff is recommending that the Community Development Commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption and adopt a resolution approving a development plan and density bonus request for the demolition of two single-family residential units on a property, and approval of a development plan for the construction of a six-story vertical mixed-use building, which will include 4,996 square feet of commercial on the ground floor fronting North Horn Street, and 180 units which will be dispersed from floors two through six of the building. The applicant is also requesting a density bonus application resulting in 10% of the total apartment count, which is 18 units, to be set aside for low-income households. The site consists of five parcels totaling .70 acres, which is outlined in red on the slide, and is located on the northwest corner of Pierview Way and North Horn Street. The site has a general planned designation of downtown and a zoning designation of downtown District 3, and is within the townsite neighborhood planning area. The project site exists mainly as undeveloped land with two single-family homes fronting Civic Center Drive. Surrounding uses include a mix of civic, commercial, retail, and office uses with high-density multifamily residential uses being located throughout the area and concentrated in the north. The project may be familiar to the council because this is a revision to a previously approved development plan. On May, in May of 2020, the Community Development Commission reviewed an application for the construction of a mixed-use project with 1,580 square feet of ground floor commercial and 76 residential units on a .47-acre lot. The applicant requested a revision to the project after subsequently acquiring two adjacent parcels to request approval of a mixed-use development with 2,082 square feet of ground floor commercial and 118 residential units on a .70-acre lot, which was approved in September of 2020. This would be the third revision of the project as requested by the project applicant. As mentioned, the mixed-use project will consist of the demolition of two single-family residential units on the property and approval of a development plan for construction, for the construction of a six-story vertical mixed-use building, which will include 4,996 square feet of commercial on the ground floor fronting North Horn Street, and 180 units will be dispersed from floors two through six of the building. The applicant is also requesting a density bonus for 10% of the apartment count, which is 18 units. Since the project would demolish two existing detached residential structures, the applicant will be required to replace the housing units of similar, of a similar income as required by Senate Bill 8. This will result in one of the 18 low-income units to be reserved for very low income. The applicant also submitted a SB 330 application in July of last year that locks in the development standards and impact fees that were in place at the time. The project will also provide 10,112 square feet of common open space in the form of a courtyard, rooftop deck, an outdoor pedestrian plaza, and a total of 1,690 square feet of private open space in the form of balconies, which will be provided in 10 of the apartment units. Parking for the mixed-use project's residential component will be provided within a three-level parking garage or parking structure designed with access to Level 1 occurring off North Horn Street and access to Levels 2 and 3 off the alley on the western portion of the property. A total of 315 parking spaces will be provided in the parking garage. The project will also provide 15 on-street parking spaces for the commercial uses that would be located on the north side of Pierview Way, south side of Civic Center, and North Horn Street. The style of the proposed project consists of a modern urban-style high-density building. The project would be, would decoratively incorporate extensive use of solar panels along the structure's vertical wall planes, with additional panels being located on the rooftop. The building zero-foot setback would reinforce a pedestrian relationship to the commercial spaces along North Horn Street and emphasize the vibrancy of the downtown urban fabric. As mentioned, the project's commercial component will be located on the first floor fronting North Horn Street and will be flexibly designed to accommodate for a variety of commercial uses. The architecture for this level incorporates features that present a commercial appearance, such as extensive facade glazing and glass entry doors for a storefront appearance to distinguish the ground floor commercial area of the building. The project will also enhance public sidewalks with the planting of additional trees, low shrubs, and ground cover in the parkways to add greenery to the street frontages for a more pleasant pedestrian experience and more attractive streetscape. Also, the use of windows and glass entry doors proposed along North Horn Street will contribute to the pedestrian streetscape by providing public visibility to the activities The residential component for the project will consist of 180 units that will be dispersed over floors two through six of the building. Floors two through six will have identical layouts comprised of 36 units on each label, excuse me, each level. The table provides a summary of the residential floor plans within the project. The residential units will consist of 51-bedroom units that are proposed at 375 square feet, and 132-bedroom units that will be between 737 to 750 square feet. The affordable units will include five low-income, one-bedroom units, and 12 low-income, two-bedroom units. Also pursuant to Senate Bill 8, any proposed housing development that requires the demolition of existing dwelling units of occupied or vacant units shall be replaced with a unit of similar income level. For this, for this project, no income information was available for one of the housing units to be demolished, which consists of a two-bedroom home. Therefore, it is presumed to be very low income. As a result, the applicant will be required to reserve one two-bedroom unit for very low income. Since the applicant is requesting approval of a development, of a density bonus application, the state's density bonus law allows for one incentive or concession, concession and unlimited waivers for the development standards. As described in the staff report, the applicant's project description and justification, in order to accommodate for the proposed density of 256 dwelling units per acre and provide 18 low-income units, the project cannot physically, physically comply with all applicable development standards. As a result, the applicant has requested the waivers for the development standards listed on this table. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a reduced zero-foot setback, an increase in building height, as well as a reduction in site landscaping, open space, and required courts and parking dimensions, and parking with adjacents to columns. The applicant is also requesting to minimize the facade modulation requirements in order to accommodate for the 180 units. There is currently no max density established for mixed-use projects in the downtown area. It should also be noted that the applicant is not requesting any concessions or incentives as part of this project. As outlined in this slide, there are three reasons a local government can deny an incentive or concession and/or waiver. The first reason is if the project was to have a specific adverse impact. A specific adverse impact is defined as a significant quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written public health or safety standards. Staff has reviewed the requested waivers and determined that there would not be a specific adverse impact by granting the density bonus request. Additionally, the project would not result in an adverse impact to historical resources and would not be contrary to state or federal law. As detailed in the staff report, staff has evaluated the project and finds it's consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. The project is consistent with the general plan's goals and policies as it relates to land use, housing, and architecture, as the six-story mixed-use building is consistent with the pattern of redevelopment in the downtown area of high-density vertical mixed-use development. The mixed-use design will support commercial establishments in the downtown area and is designed to be compatible with surrounding areas. The project will also provide 180 rental apartments, thereby adding to a variety of housing in the downtown area, and 17 low-income units and one very low-income unit, thereby providing affordable housing in proximity to commercial uses and public transit. The project complies with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, except where the applicant is requesting waivers that are consistent with state density bonus law. On July 26, staff presented the project to the Downtown Advisory Committee. The committee voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the project. There was discussion amongst the committee regarding the size of the apartment units, as the residential units would consist of one-bedroom units that are proposed at 375 square feet, and two-bedroom units that would be between 737 to 750 square feet. It was determined that the size of the unit is similar that, to that of other units in the area and under the current market for rental units. The project complied with the city's enhanced notification program by posting a notice of application sign on the property. There was also a mailed notice to the property owners within 1,500 feet of the project site. In addition, notices were sent to occupants and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the project site, therefore exceeding the minimum 100-foot radius requirement for the occupants and/or tenant mail notification requirements. A community outreach meeting was held on May 16, 2023. A total of two residents attended the meeting. All public correspondence received for the project has been added to the record. has been added to the record. There was a letter received by staff regarding the SEQA determination of the project and one in support of the project. Staff is recommending that the Community Development Commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption as the site is located in an urbanized area and adopt a resolution approving the development plan and the density bonus requests. This concludes my presentation. The applicant has also prepared a presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have, the applicant has up to 20 minutes?
Thank you. Good evening. Dan Niebaum with the Lifefoot Planning Group here on behalf of the applicant, Sunset LP. I want to thank staff for their very thorough presentation. Appreciate that. And they went into a number of details related to the continuing design of this project. As Natalie mentioned, this is a third iteration of this, and we've looked at several of these items before. The project in front of you, again, was approved originally in 2020 and was revised in 2020. We brought it back under a density bonus law this year with additional units and with affordable housing units as part of the project, which it did not have before. So as Natalie had detailed, there's 18 affordable units in the project, 17 at the very low income level and one at the, or 17 at the low income level and one at the very low income level. Again, DAC saw the project in July, approved unanimously. Natalie went through the community outreach that we had. We, we had the community meeting. Two people, married couples showed up. So one household showed up at that meeting. We filled out a few questions and emails very minimally throughout this process. I think that speaks to the quality of the project and its location in the downtown area. In fact, it's been, the previous version of this project is very similar to what we brought forward today. So we did a little bit of a project comparison. I know Natalie went through some of these numbers, but again, originally, the previously approved project or the existing approved project, because the approval is still valid, was approved at 118 units. Now we're asking for 180, of course, with a 10% reserve for lower-income units. The first-floor commercial and flex space that we had in the previous project was around a little over 2,000 square feet, and now it's just under 5,000 square feet. That includes space for gym amenities, co-work, and lobby-type space, an artist's studio, and personal services-type space. And I have a graphic that'll show you that on the floor plan. Comparison on the number of stories, essentially, it's the same envelope in this building as was previously approved. There's five residential over one commercial on Horn Street. The stories on the alley, back into the alley, that's where the project's a little bit different. The original project has four residential units over two parking, because the upper unit had large balconies for the upper-floor units that are on the, the sixth floor. So now we have five residential units. We kind of filled in that balcony space over the two parking levels. We've increased the size of the roof deck by almost 2,600 feet. I'll show you some details on that. And increased the amount of parking on-site. So the, the project is fully parked in the parking garage. Some of the spaces on the street are utilized, will be utilized to support the commercial spaces. And we also have a bicycle room that will support up to 193 bike spaces, which will help support alternative transportation for residents that live there. And the solar component is a major component of the design of this building. And mostly on the rooftop, that's increased in size by almost 9,000 square feet. Natalie had shown some of these graphics, so I won't spend too long on them. But the proposed project is in the upper-left and the, the previously approved project's in the lower right. Very similar in design, scale, building envelope. And as I could show you on the, the back, Natalie had shown this. Again, this has the, you know, the, the striking street frontage with the lower-level glass facade that, you know, has been asked for in the downtown area where we can activate those spaces and show commercial activity or lobby activity, office activity inside those spaces. So the project maintains that. It's a strong component of the streetscape of the project. This is a view of the project from the alley side. So if you look on the upper level, that's the space along the edge where, before, those were balconies. Now that's, that's part of the project residential unit area. But the rooftop deck is highly amenitized in a project like this. It's an important component. We've increased the amount of square footage on the rooftop deck, as we mentioned. Some of the solar panel areas have increased in size as well. But, you know, the rooftop deck allows a great deal of space for social interaction. There's barbecue space, there's lounge space, there's view lounge space adjacent to the railing that looks out to the west, the ocean view. And there's also a pet park and a pet wash, if you can see up in the lower left-hand corner, or the upper right-hand corner, but the lower left-hand corner of the building. So that provides a great deal of amenities for the residents that are going to live in this project. Here's a blow-up of that. So the pet park in the lower left-hand corner, the community pool, the lounge areas. It's a really, you know, active spot for social gathering. And this is the first-level floor plan that essentially has the parking level, or it's the horn-level floor plan. The spaces in green are the, the commercial, flex commercial, non-residential spaces and just under 5,000 square feet, again of lobby and co-work space. In the middle, there's the, what we call the Creative Arts Center, which is going to provide artist studio or music studio space. It can be rented by people that want to give music or art lessons or show gallery showings in that space. It'd also be utilized by residents who live there. The fitness club and outdoor fitness space, again, might be utilized by the residents, but it can also be utilized for gym memberships and for training. And this is just a simple graphic showing the increase in the solar panels on the roof deck. And those are the solar panels that, very similar array of what was in the approved project. So in summary, again, it's 180 new units in the downtown area with 10% of those reserved for lower-income levels. The project is located within a half-mile of the Transit Center. I mentioned that we did provide onsite parking for residents and did not take, you know, advantage of potential parking reductions with that location near the Transit Center, because this project will fully park itself. Again, almost 5,000 square feet of flex space. And the improved parkways next to the public sidewalks will be maintained by the project. That was one of the elements that we incorporated in landscape design on the project. And again, the project has almost just under 25,000 square feet of solar on the roof and walls. And I think we are fully aware of the, the letters sent from Safer and, sorry for the barrage of emails late in the day, but that was our team's responses to comments raised in that letter that was received at midday today, the day of the hearing. And we fully stand behind the SEQA analysis that was done by our team and that staff has endorsed and recommended approval of. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I would encourage you to, to adopt staff's recommendation and the unanimous approval of the DAC on this project. And again, available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have any written requests to speak?
Yes, we do. We have two advanced written requests to speak. Our first speaker is Ken Layton, to be followed by Marjan Abuboe.
Madam Mayor and council members, you're here tonight to sign off on Howard Jacobs' lovely seven-story tenement in downtown Oceanside called Sunsets, where 50 of the units have an actual living space of 349 square feet. You're approving this with a majority of council members, Kime, Weiss, and Robinson, having received campaign cash from Mr. Jacobs. He knew Sunsets was a dicey proposition, so he covered the spread with some campaign cash. This council also approved the Breeze eight-story train wreck, which is actually 146 storage bins stacked on top of each other. And you yourself, Councilman Weiss, called it a monstrosity and a, and not good for the neighborhood, and you still voted for it. How can this be? Well, Oceanside is apparently a pay-to-play city, and if you fork out the campaign dough, you can get a council majority to approve your high-density ghetto stacks. And the Chamber of Commerce will also come and speak and write letters and say how wonderful your urban asshole is if you give it enough money. That's exactly what Howard Jacobs did with these two projects. But here is where it gets even creepier. Howard Jacobs is not a developer after all. He has no plans to develop either of these projects. He has figured out a scheme to get a council majority to approve these neighborhood ISOs and then put them on the market. I have provided the clerk proof that Mr. Jacobs is peddling these approved projects. Jacobs will let you have Sunsets for 13.5 million, and the stacks of storage boxes called the Breeze can be yours for just 9.5 million. Is this a scam that Mr. Jacobs has figured out because we have councilmen who will happily sell out your neighborhood for a little campaign cash? Or is this just a very savvy, non-developer developer who knows how to get what he wants if he just pays off certain pliable councilmen? Howard Jacobs has given 24 political donations to Oceanside politicians like Kime, Weiss, and Robinson, totaling $59,000 over many years. What a cesspool of bare-faced political palm greasing.
Thank you. Did you, oh, and we have Marjan Abuboe?
Can you hear me?
Yes. I think they're asking you to use the mic because we're having technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Got it? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and honorable council members. My name is Marjan Abuboe with Lozo Jury, and I'm here on behalf of Safer, the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility and its workers who live and work in and around the city of Oceanside. With regard to the Sunsets project, Safer respectfully requests the city council not to approve the Class 32 exemption and to instead direct city staff to prepare an initial study to determine the level of review that's proper under SEQA. Safer timely submitted written comments for the record earlier today, and we sent it to Ms. Vasquez and the city clerk. So I just, hopefully, we can confirm that those were received and they're preserved for the record. But with the limited time I have today, I'd like to highlight three reasons why proceeding with the exemption violates SEQA. So first, a project cannot qualify for SEQA's exemption if the project results in significant noise impacts. Our independent experts at Wilson-Irig concluded that the project will have potentially significant noise impacts and that the levels will exceed the highest measured ambient levels by 10 to 19 decibels. Safer acknowledges the city's efforts to reduce noise levels by conditioning project approval through the installation of noise-abatement materials. But case law makes clear that agencies cannot depend on mitigation measures as a workaround for allowing a project to proceed under an exemption. Second, a project cannot qualify for an exemption if the project results in significant air and greenhouse gas impacts. In our review of the exemption, the city fails to support its conclusions with substantial evidence. So for example, the city concedes that it meets the California Air Resources Board's 2017 scoping plan. However, it is silent on whether it meets the updated scoping plan that CARB finalized back in 2022. And lastly, the exemptions analysis cannot be relied upon in good faith. Our independent experts, with decades of combined experience in the field, agree that inputs, parameters, and information used to estimate project emissions are not supported by substantial evidence or are simply misleading. I heard from the project applicant that this is the third iteration, and I think that might be the reason why the current parameters are incorrect. The analysis was conducted with what I'm guessing with emissions based off of a prior iteration where they only analyzed the impacts related to two or one of the project, but not the entirety of the three parcels. Wilson-Irig, our expert, for example, expressed concern because the noise studies' measurements are based on areas where no sensitive receptors are located. There's so much to be said, but to close, Safer respectfully asks the city not to approve the project, and we request the city to prepare an initial study pursuant to SEQA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. This is, those were the two written requests.
That is correct. And, and we did distribute Mr. Abuboe's message to the council, and they have been preserved for the record. And we did confirm that we did receive it.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. You do not have to have submitted a request to speak either written or having checked in. You can, at this time, speak to the council without checking in, approach the podium as Mr. Knott has done, and basically give your name and speak for up to three minutes. And Mr. Knott, starting with Mr. Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. There is a couple issues which I wish to raise, and one is, is the planning, our planning department has neglected a new type of feature that's being presented throughout the state, and that is shadow casting. And that's with a multi-story building, a shadow casting estimate on the effect into a neighborhood by any development that is multi-story. Because it's, a shadow can affect things like algae growth, moss development, things like that onto adjacent housing or other structures. That was not presented nor is required, but some cities are taking and developing that type of requirement so that it adds to a healthy city growth. The second thing is that there is a solar collection system, but there was neglect to take and share with us about the number of solar charging stations for vehicles. We need to know that because you have outside parking and inside parking. Is it going to take and affect the power grid on the local community? Or is it going to be a self-sufficient system? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please actually use the mic. State your name.
I'm Rosie Higera, and I would like to address Mr. Layton's, what he brought up about Councilmember Kime, Weiss, and Sanchez. What do you guys have to say about those allegations that he brought, about the developer giving bribe money?
Could you please address the project?
Well, that was something that was brought up, and I think that your constituents deserve to know. And I'd like to know what the evidence was that was presented. I think you guys should clear your name. That's something big. There shouldn't be a question mark in stakeholders, mine, or community members.
Do you, do you have? Do you want to address the actual project? Do you have any questions about the actual project? Do you have any questions about the actual project?
Well, that's what I want to know, actually.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? And if I could just say, any of our council members can take a point of personal privilege if they wish. My name wasn't brought up. You said my name, so my name wasn't brought up. But at any time, a council member can take a point of personal privilege and address the issue, okay? But back to the public hearing on this item.
Good evening. Honorable mayor and council members, thank you for your time. This is probably an oddball, off-the-wall, out-of-the-box request. It seems to me that the developer or the representative, out of the goodness of their heart, in this low housing, low-income housing need situation, could increase the number of low-housing qualified apartments to the current requirement instead of the old requirement the first time this project was approved. I know they don't have to, but it is something they could do in good faith if they were maybe pressured just a little bit or asked or requested to do that. I'll request you do that right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else wishing to address this item?
I'm Kelly O'Neill. Oceanside is my hometown, and I found it odd before Mr. Layton spoke that Lightfoot Planning Group was doing this project because aren't they the same people who are blowing a hole in our Fire Mountain neighborhood with the avocado project? And I just... Like, why... My question was, why are they... Why do they have all these projects over Oceanside? They're taking... And the project is ugly. It looks like Communist block China. It looks like East Berlin. It is an ugly building. But what... But it seems like the Lightfoot Planning Group is taking advantage of these bills that David Chu wrote, who is a card-holding member of the World Economic Forum. He wrote these bills, these so-called bills, who... They have no authority to take our power away from us. They have no authority. And I'm still wondering why you guys are rolling over and not standing up for our rights. The state has more power over our neighborhoods than we do because of these so-called bills. And David Chu had... Has no authority to change how we operate in California. Yeah, so the Lightfoot Planning Group have questions about why they are all over our city and just blowing holes up. Will have proposed plans to blow holes up and put really ugly, ugly buildings. And what they're doing to Fire Mountain is horrible. They're changing the zoning, which you guys said that you weren't doing. But you are changing the zonings. Whenever it's smart corridors or smart this, the smart corridors. David Chu wrote a bill, I think it was 1763, that allowed for you guys to use the smart corridors, to come in and let these people do whatever they want to our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this project? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And was there some time left over? He doesn't get rebuttal. He doesn't yet.
He gets rebuttal.
He does. Okay. Was there some time left over?
The time was about 14:25.
Okay, so do you wish to speak?
Please, Honorable mayor, just to address a couple minor things. A lot of comments all over the board there. You know, in particular, related to the technical analysis for this project. All the technical analysis have been updated for this specific project. We took a fresh look at those items, and that's part of the CEQA analysis. Staff required that, and we did that. Any of the current traffic, greenhouse gas, air quality, noise studies, they were all updated. In fact, a previous consultant did the studies for the prior project and a different consultant did the studies here, so they're absolutely updated. So I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Howard Jacobs. I'm Howard Jacobs. Those of you who are elected have to face this kind of commentary. Can you hear me now? Okay. Can you hear me now? How's that?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, thank you. I'm Howard Jacobs. What I wanted to say was that those of you who are in public office have to deal with this kind of stuff all the time. It's really hard to hear people blatantly lie about you and say horrible things about you, and I feel bad that you all have to put up with that as well. So many of these comments that were made are just scurrilous and wrong. They're not true. Now, besides that, with regard to the Safer letter, if you do decide that you want to seriously consider that letter, I believe that you all understand who Safer is, who they really represent, and the fact that you get these letters, similar, almost identical letters on virtually every project, and why you get them. This particular letter we got about five hours ago, so we had almost no chance to respond, and that's the intent of that type of letter. Within mere minutes, it was obvious that many of the allegations in the letter are just simply wrong, and it's unfortunately a disservice to the staff who works really hard and does a really good job to say things like, oh, there's only a Phase 1 on part of the property. That's just completely not true. It's not factually correct. What happened was, as you saw in the presentation, we originally purchased one part of the land, and then a year later, we purchased another part of the land. So we did two separate Phase 2s. They were both submitted to the city. They're both in the E-Trackit. They were both reviewed by staff. But Safer writes a letter and claims that there's only one, and that's fairly typical of the kind of stuff in that letter. So please consider that type of thing as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for the rebuttal? Is that it? Okay, thank you. All right. Does staff want to comment any further?
Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council, I think the record speaks for itself. If there's any specific questions you may have, we're here available for your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. To the council then. Councilmember Joyce. Is there an echo?
Funhouse with the audio. It's fun.
It's been a wonderful evening.
I had just a couple of specific questions because of the 10% inclusionary ordinance, there will be 18 low-income units. So are there any restrictions or any differences in those units' ability to access amenities like the pool or anything else? If you want to, you can come up to the mic. I just ask for the public record.
But I was wondering who was saying that. I was like...
Councilmember Joyce, I didn't know if you were directing that to staff, but of course, law requires that. The amenities are, of course, available to all residents of the building. The units will be dispersed throughout the building as required and not located in just one section, and again, that's required as well. The percentage of unit sizes are dispersed based on the overall market rate units and then the number of affordable units that are provided.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, there were 10 units that have those larger balconies in the project?
Correct.
So one of those units will be an affordable unit as well?
I don't think one of those will be, but a one-bedroom unit with the size it's required will. Well, we can look at that, and there may be, but no, they're not.
I... Councilmember, I don't believe that they're specifically assigned on the plans, but they're required to be and are intended to be ratably distributed. So if the mathematics dictate that one of those would be that way, then it would be.
I don't know if they're random. I think they're supposed to be deliberately distributed so that their access is the same.
No, I said ratably, not randomly.
Oh, excuse me.
Ratably distributed, sorry.
Thank you. I know, the audio is just...
Looks like staff would like to address the council on that issue.
Certainly. Councilmember Joyce, could everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
To address the question, our density bonus provisions, our local density bonus provisions require that the income-restricted units be distributed and dispersed throughout the project sites. They're not concentrated in one specific place. In addition, they have to be proportional with respect to the market rate units, and all those specific details will be outlined in the Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement that will be prepared for the project subsequent to any approval that the council might have.
So just to understand your response, so it's possible that one will have a balcony, but it's not for certain?
It's not certain.
Right, okay. That's what I thought.
So I was reading an article earlier this week. It talked about these mixed-use developments that go up around California. Specifically talked a lot about how the commercial spaces that are at the base of a lot of these developments have been tricky and sometimes difficult to maintain commercial use within. A lot of times, you see like these stickers with people's faces go up on them or other ways to kind of mask the idea. The worst-case scenario, there's cardboard put up. But essentially, it's a known issue to keep these spaces occupied and vibrant, which leads to blight. So I was curious. I think, you know, I love the idea of a creative arts center. We certainly have, as a city, a strong interest in making sure that the arts are fostered within the city. Is there any interest in collaborating and creating more of a civic art space that's dedicated within this commercial area?
Well, first, can you hear me okay? I can't tell from here. Yeah? I'll try to...
There you go.
I just don't want to be yelling into it. I have personally seen in places like Santa Monica, despite some comments that were made, I have been actually developing and building buildings for over 40 years, and I'm now in my mid-60s, about to be late 60s, and that's one of the reasons that I'm changing my investments. But in any case, yes, I have seen ground-for-mixed-use spaces that have been not planned well, and they don't wind up getting used. That's why the commercial space in this building is what we have sort of called flex commercial. It can be used by the residents. It's a big enough building to support the fitness area, the art area, music area, and cowork areas with the residents, but they're also intended to be open for commercial tenants. So, for example, the fitness might have a group of trainers that have clients from outside the building and manage that space, but the residents can also use it. So in keeping with your comment about a music or art venue where residents might be able, for example, to have practice spaces for their music or an art work area, studio area that they can use, they can also be used by members of the public. How that would become community would be to be determined. It is intended to be open for commercial use, and if that means the building ownership wants to cooperate with some city program or museum, the museum or something, there's no reason that that cannot happen.
Okay, so there's not interest in creating sustainable partnership? That would be part of the agreement for passing this plan?
I don't understand what sustainable partnership means. If you're saying the city wants to rent space, then I'm sure that could be discussed. It will be available for rent, but if what you mean is give it away for free, no.
That's all the questions I have.
Anyone else?
I'd also like to hear the mayor's thoughts on this. As we have with many of these projects that I also have issues with, we have to identify a specific adverse impact, which means significant quantifiable direct and unavoidable impact based on objective written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they exist on the date the application was deemed complete. So if you have that, I would like to know if it's something reasonable and that we actually have that discretion.
Councilmember Joyce.
I would just add, the reason that I ask about making sure that this building has something that is a give-back to the greater community and not just the residents that are within, it's that this project seeks waivers on so many pieces, so many general requirements that we have, whether it be setbacks that are reduced to zero, whether it be the height, whether it be landscaping, or open space, or the court size, or the parking spaces, which are not full-size parking spaces across. It's a... It is a frustration that this is the kind of thing that...
You can sit down. Thank you.
Those ideas are in place in the downtown because we want to encourage responsible development. And so I'm frustrated by the general project, and so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear before we moved on.
Deputy Mayor, Kime.
I'll finish my comments. I'm frustrated by these as well. The same applicant had the Breeze project. I did not support that project with the mayor. However, at that point, the mayor still did not identify a specific adverse impact. I don't think our denial would have been upheld, but that's the challenge. If we're going to have density, I'm going to push back on our single-family neighborhoods where we're using these density bonus and waivers. I don't know what's going to happen in a court of law. I'm willing to test it. You know, the mayor seems to think...
Yeah.
The mayor seems to think that each one of these are objective, so I'm waiting to hear tonight. But if we're going to do density, I'm going to push back on the single-family neighborhoods in our downtown area. This is where we can have density as opposed to going further south in South Oceanside or Fire Mountain. So those are our challenges. But again, I'm very interested to hear a specific adverse impact. And again, these are density bonus laws written by the state. Councilmember Joyce, again, I'm very frustrated. I think I really want to have the ability to manage growth and just design standards and different things, whether it's setbacks or parking. A lot of these projects are coming back... Are coming very underparked. Those are things that are... Discretion's been taken away from us, and if, again, any of my colleagues have a legal way to push back on that, I'm very open to hearing it.
Councilmember Joyce.
Density is... The density bonuses are given on top of what we consider a base density for all of our zoning. Is that correct?
Councilmember Joyce, as articulated in the staff report, the downtown district does not have a density cap, so we're not granting a bonus of additional density with this. What the city is getting in return for the waivers are 18 income-restricted units that are deemed restricted for 55 years.
So in a typical space that is not the downtown zone currently, there is a base density, though? And that would essentially set a max to how much density bonus a developer could get on top of what they are seeking?
Councilmember Joyce, in most of our land use districts that have a density, there's a range of densities for residential zones, and our commercial districts, we have a maximum density. It doesn't have a minimum density, a base density, so to speak. So yes, to your point...
Max density, not base.
Maximum density range, on top of which, we can grant additional density.
For the density bonus. That's right. So part of this problem is that we don't have... I mean, I say problem, but that we don't have a max density in the downtown area right now, which was a decision that was made back in 2019?
19.
19? So there are things that we can do, is what I'm trying to say. And we can't just point to state because this is a project that is a... It comes out of our own current standards right now, and I ask that we do move on that sooner... And I ask that we do move on that sooner than later, so that we can also include ourselves as part of the solution to what we consider the problem.
Deputy Mayor Kime.
I, I guess I'm a little confused, Councilmember Joyce, with especially our housing workshop on the 30th. So you would rather have, if the, the last iteration of this was 118 units with no affordable units, would you rather have that? Because I keep getting, we were pushing to get 15, 20% affordable and bump the density up, but now the density's bumped up with affordable, and then we're saying we don't want that. I just am, I'm trying to make sense of what kind of policy. I mean, if, I'm more than happy to author a joint letter of the council pushing back on density bonus and bringing local control back, if you're willing to sign that with me and send it to the supermajority in Sacramento.
Councilmember Weiss.
I just have a question for staff. Where are we with coming back with a cap for the downtown?
Yeah.
Honorable mayor and councilmember, is that scheduled for October the 4th?
Okay, I'm, can I speak, or would you like to?
Eventually one.
Okay. I, I want to say, I've really struggled with this project. Of course, you know, we have the state density bonus laws mandatory from the state. And the one redeeming value here for me is, are the 18 affordable units. But I, but my background was in, in urban studies, urban planning, studying problems, inner-city problems because of densities, because of lack of space, because of lack of green space. Just a lot of problems that have, that occur in really high-density places. The projects in New York was happening in Boston at the time when I was going to college. We're all looking at this and trying to figure out, how can we build? How can the built environment actually contribute to the health and safety of the community? Kind of a very simple kind of task, you would think, right? I think I was very lucky to go to Brown University and went to, was able to take some classes at RISD, Rhode Island School of Design, the architectural school, and just saw all these really brilliant ideas about how you create the built environment to really be able to impact everyone in a positive way, regardless of what you can afford. So I look at these 18 units, 375 square feet. That's a one-bedroom. That's a family, for a family. Because, you know, the, some of the adults would sleep in the living room, if there is a living room, and of course, the kids and all, however many kids would live in a bedroom. And I am having a very difficult time believing that these are very livable spaces, even for, for low-income communities, who, by the way, let me just say this, there are more low-income residents that live in market-rate housing than affordable housing. You know, I, I, I get the digs about, you know, well, somebody has to pay for something. Crown Heights, all the rental units over there are market-rate. We're not talking, and we're, we're not talking affordable units there. We're talking folks who need the help to be able to live and work and have their kids here in Oceanside. So from a public safety, public health and safety point of view, you know, my background from many years ago is coming back to me to say, you know what, this is not a healthy situation for any families. Never mind not having building standards, right? I mean, yeah, it's our fault, city's fault, for not having density limits, that somebody can come in here and say, I want to build, you know, we started off by, whatever it was, 118, now it's 1-whatever, 80-something, it's like, and the height, and no articulation, so it's just one huge block of a wall. No setback at all. No articulation. And yeah, I, I talked to our city manager and said, I want to do what Carlsbad's doing. They're doing, you know, they're doing objective standards, right? And, and what is, and, and Mr. Ja, and Mr. Borrego said, well, you know, that can be waived too. This is just so really frustrating. Yes, of course, I want more units, and yes, I really want those 18 units. But I do believe, you know, and, and I wish that I had continued on, on getting my masters, you know, in, in urban studies, urban planning. But it's the idea of the built environment impacting the health and safety and level of crime in a city is just staring me in the face right now with this project. I, I'm having, 375 square feet, you know, it's, it's so small. So, I'm going to stop there and go to Councilmember Robinson. And I do think that there could be an argument. I'm sorry, I do. And I guess maybe it's an educational kind of a, you know, observing and, and kind of like what I did when I went door-to-door, when I was, you know, working on my BA in urban planning, and really talking to people in these high-density places, and kind of doing the same kind of studies that I was reading about. So, I haven't done a whole lot of studies since then. Maybe, maybe we should be looking at, what is, what does density do to the health and safety of, of a family? Maybe that's what we should be doing, including, because if this is going to continue and we can't fight back, and we can't say, we, we have to get back local control, then we got to figure out a way to say, yes, this is impacting the health and safety of our community. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, mayor. I would, I would say, to compare this project to the projects of New York City, or Chicago, or any other large urban city is misguided, personally, I believe that. I, I also think that, in your comments, ma'am, you make a lot of assumptions about who's going to live here. We just had a young man come up and talk earlier, you know, about trying to stay here in the city. I don't think we can make an assumption that every one-bedroom unit is going to be a family of six. I think it's going to allow younger people, our workforce, starting out, that, we talk about that a lot. And, and I think, yeah, they're small, but for those 18 individuals that qualify to move in, and it's a start. It's a starting place for them to stay here in Oceanside. We keep talking about that, and we can't keep turning our nose up every time a project comes through, and it's not exactly what we would want. You know, the projects here, I, I, I agree with what deputy mayor, the deputy mayor said earlier about pushing back and doing all those things, but, and same with Councilmember Joyce, I can agree with you on a lot of things, and mayor, on a lot of things you said, but that's not for us to decide and do tonight. We can't, this project is before us tonight, and it meets all the criteria. I think they've answered, asked, and asked a lot of questions, answered the questions, and I think it's for us to, to pass it tonight.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion to staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Joyce.
I would just say that housing policy is chess, not checkers. So, sure, I do love inclusionary housing ordinances. I think it's a really good tool, one of the many tools, one of, one small tool, because, as you can see, even with that, we continue to build many more above-market homes than we do the, that are included. So, I can appreciate a part of a project, or appreciate a part of something, and still think it's not in the best interest overall. It's complicated.
Ryan.
My point to my earlier statement was you're concerned about the density, but every policy that...
Why don't you speak to the project instead of me?
I, I am speaking to this project. Mayor, please let me speak. But as, as we go up to 15, 20%, the density goes up, and that's how these projects pencil. So we have to have, if we're going to have more affordable, there's going to be more density. So we can't say we want more affordable and less density. But, mayor, as this project is, have you, knowing this is coming forward, I've spoken to staff and worked, and I have not found a legal adverse impact. I have not heard one from you tonight. So, I want to hear, you, you said maybe we should do density, and if that impacts health, have you spent any time behind, before this, preparing for this? Or, I just, it concerns me when we come up to a council meeting, and it's easy to say no with no direct adverse impact, and be the hero pushing back when there's no legal reason to do that. And I think it's, it's harmful for the public process, for the public who's listening, who's confused now. I, I think if this is that important, please explain to us an adverse impact. I'm, I'm very willing to be a partner here and try to push back on these things. I have not heard one yet.
Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff, whether it's planner or Mr. Mullen. Is the size of the unit, or the overall size of the unit, a valid finding for denial?
No, not unless it's violating a city standard. Staff hasn't identified one.
The comment that the project impacts the health and safety of the community, is that a valid finding for denial?
I, I think as we've discussed before, and as the slide showed, the standard, which we've talked about innumerable times here on density bonus projects, is specific adverse effect, which is the violation of a written public health and safety standard.
Thank you.
So, so we need a written public health and safety standard to address.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second, and I want to say, there are three of us that are still on the dais for when a motion came up to eliminate the density maximums for the downtown. And I voted against it. And unfortunately, it passed. And I do believe that part of the reason why we're in this position tonight is because of that. So, Councilmember Kime and Councilmember Weiss voted for that. I guess it was actually Councilmember Weiss who brought it forward.
And we gave direction to change it.
Yeah, he did. So, I do believe that if we had that standard, which we don't, which is our fault, our, this council's fault, even though I voted against it, I guess, I was part of that council. So I do feel very strongly that but for that, we would be talking about certain densities that would not be healthy. So, yes, I did have a time to talk to staff. I do have some very serious problems with this. The struggle that I have is that it would get me 18 units. However, I'm thinking about the folks that came to us, 46 of them, 47 of them, who spoke to us, and why would I put them into, from one hell to another? You know, I, I just don't, to me, this is not the ideal project. I appreciate that there are differences of opinion on that. But for me, who probably has the only background on the, on the council with, with urban planning, urban studies, and who actually went out and talked to people with all the problems that they have of an inner-city, and looking at this block, it would be one block, really tall building, I, I, I'm leaning towards not being able to approve it. Deputy Mayor Kime.
I just want to clarify before we vote, we're getting there. And this, if you have a specific adverse impact, I can support, please...
This is not about me.
This is about us as council.
I really, I think, I think you need...
Mayor, I'm, can I please finish?
...to address the project, sir.
I am. I, I'm asking, please, this is opportunity to give me a specific adverse impact that staff and the city attorney's office say is reasonable, and then I will support you. Please identify a specific one. I'm, that's what I'm asking for. If not, then I, I just, I don't understand how we can move forward denying it.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, mayor. And I'm not trying to be argumentative on this, but I just want to understand, you talk about the height of the building. Why, can you just tell me why height of the building is a concern for you? And I'm, I'm just trying to, under, you, you said the height of the building, why is that a problem?
These are my comments. The density, seven stories of high, really high density, I mean, that, those are my comments. If you wish to make your comments, make your comments.
Well, I'll say this, that the height of the building from, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to, if you're concerned about safety or whatever, but I'm, with the safety systems that are put in place in these modern buildings, this building is not a high building from standards of the fire department to be able to operate or anything else. So that, that's not a problem. And I would just close with this, is remember the saying, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And we can't always get a perfect project, but we can get good projects, and it's up to us to look out for, you know, you said, I forget the number, 50-some people that spoke. I'm wondering which 18 out of that, would love to get into this building when it's built someday and be able to have a, a new start. So, I'll end with that. Thanks.
Let's vote.
Motion approved for one, Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Moving on to, do we have public requests to speak on items off agenda, item 23?
Yes, we do. We have eight speakers.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Bill Bachelor, to be followed by Janet Bachelor, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening. I'll try to speak up. Bill Bachelor, South Oceanside. Yesterday, I was at the El Corazon Senior Center. There's a point to this story. Standing with my brother immediately outside the front door of the center, standing at the curb having a conversation, when a beautiful senior with a walker slowly shuffled up to stand beside us. Out of the corner of my eye, I saw her looking off the curb into what to her was an abyss. I offered to help her, saying, would you like some help down? She said, yes, please, thank you. I did. I landed her softly. A couple of minutes later, somebody picked her up in a car. This is the natural place for a pickup, and there is no curb cutout here. This is extremely dangerous. I went back today to make sure I had my facts correct. There is a curb cutout roughly 40 feet to the south that goes to 100-foot crosswalk that goes to the parking lot. There's another curb cutout about 90 feet to the north that goes to 100-foot crosswalk that goes to the north parking lot. That is great for the people, our seniors, that are mobily able, so they can get to their cars, but the most vulnerable stand at that curb to be picked up. Today, when I showed up to do this extra looking around, there was a mobility van parked at that exact spot, waiting for somebody unable to drive to come get them. You need a curb cutout at that spot. Somebody is going to get hurt and/or die. You say that's hyperbole, classic citizen speaking in grand dramatic terms. One month ago today, I went to my mom's house to visit with her for an hour and then take her to the doctors. When I made it around the corner to her front door, I found her face down on the pavement in front of her house with her walker tangled around her, because she tried to go out the front door and fell approximately the same distance of what that curb was in front of the senior center. A massive head injury, trauma, fear, screaming, an ambulance ride to Scripps Memorial. When I arrived there, it took about 20 minutes for the doctors to come to me to give me the prognosis. I stayed with her for the next 36 hours until she died. I know these things are rare. I know these things are rare, and I know they don't happen often, but they're real. And if you've witnessed it, there's a reason I was put on that curb yesterday at 4:00 PM when that beautiful lady came out there. I am not a religious man in the traditional sense, but I cannot ignore when something like that happens where you go, I was put here, standing here today, to see this woman's problem to try to exit this building. I'm going to beg you to just, direct staff to go look at this, set aside the funds, fix it. Please fix it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could staff meet with Mr. Bachelor? Mr. Gossman, could you please meet with Mr. Bachelor? Janet Bachelor?
Good evening, councilmembers and Honorable Mayor. You five have the power to make a difference in seniors' lives. I'm here again to ask you to consider reestablishing the senior commission. And I'll bring up a few following service-related items to your attention. There's no senior meals served at the El Corazon Senior Center. The background, the kitchen was built, Phase II of El Corazon Senior Center, with the understanding that seniors were going to get meals at the kitchen. What actually happened is the city awarded a lease to OKC. It's a free lease, they're not paying anything, and they have exclusive rights to the kitchen. And there's no mention of serving seniors' meals at all in their scope of work in their And that's been going on for five years. The dining room adjacent to the kitchen, it sits empty, and there are curtains blocking it because it's an eyesore. The senior transportation program from 2010 to 2022 had a three-component program. It had volunteer drivers, it had taxi script, and it had a shuttle. For $5, seniors could take it anywhere in the county. Today, it's one and maybe a fourth component program. There's no shuttle service, there's a few volunteer drivers, and they only purchase 50 books of taxi script per month. And three years ago, they were purchasing 250 taxi books a month. So basically, they sell out each month in 10 minutes, and only a handful of seniors get that taxi script. So I'm asking you to reestablish the senior commission so they can be a voice, they can advocate for themselves. There's also safety concerns at Country Club Senior Center that five years ago, we had to come to council because the homeless encampments were so bad. And that prompted the next day, the city manager, public works director, code enforcement, everybody was cleaning them up, and now there's a fence at Country Club Senior Center. However, there's encampments all, they're closer to the building now. And staff, I asked staff, is, you know, supervision aware? Oh, yeah, everybody's aware. They're bringing power tools, and they're cutting the fence now. So my request is for you five to go take a tour at the senior center, please. Look inside, look around the encampments, have lunch at the senior center, then go to the El Corazon Senior Center, do the same. You can't have lunch there, though. Then go to the Country Club, then go to the senior centers in Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and just look around at theirs. So I'm asking to just do the research, give the seniors a voice, let them, if you just do a commission, they can advocate for themselves, and all these other issues will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arlene Hammerschmidt?
Arlene Hammerschmidt, Rurlish Fire Mountain. I was asked the question today, whatever happened to the third-party-
Arlene, we're just going to stop just to make sure that the microphone is on, sorry.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I'll restart your time.
Okay, you'll refund my time? Okay, great. And thank you for this nice close-up. I'll try to hold close. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Rurlish Fire Mountain. I was asked the question today, whatever happened to the report or about that third-party consultant who was hired by the city to investigate-
Hold on, they're going to give you a minute.
Right.
So none of what she just said was heard by KOC T?
It doesn't sound, you know, that sounds different. Okay, starting over. Thank you. Arlene Hammerschmidt, oh my goodness, this sounds loud. Rurlish Fire Mountain. And I was asked the question today by a District One resident, whatever happened to that whole third-party consultant investigation of Parks and Recreation regarding the complaint that you filed? And I said, well, I'm going to talk to city council about that tonight. So here is the last page of the consultant, Mr. Bob Lee's report, and I'm going to ask you to put on your speed reading skills as I just kind of scroll through this. I'll try to go slow enough so that everybody can actually get some idea of what's happening. The green underlining is mine. I'm also not going to ask you to multitask and listen to me and read at the same time. These are his recommendations after his several-week-long investigation. And my question tonight is, what are we going to see about these recommendations? Are we going to see them enacted? Because Parks and Recreation is still a mess. And his recommendations make a lot of sense. This one I have underlined because it would stop a problem, but this is not in writing And I apologize, I don't have enough time to do the whole background on what the issue was. Maybe you can pick it up. The checks on the side are, what status is it? The half a check is because it's in process. Number seven is complete. Number eight, I challenge, please, a couple council members to make this happen. This would, I believe, need to be on the council agenda and change this policy language. This needs to happen. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. I have to echo a previous speaker. We need the senior commission reestablished. That's very simple to do. You have the power within your hands. You can do it tonight if you wanted to. It's very simple. I'm not going to go any further. You know that what you can do, you know what you can't do. I know it too. But I go on to another subject. I look at Spain, I look at Greece, I look at around the world, Libya. I look at what climate change is doing. They're getting a year's worth of rain in hours, and they aren't prepared. We in Oceanside, are we prepared to get a whole year of rain, an hour, and a day? Can we handle it? I can assure you, we aren't. We need to start thinking ahead. Climate change is a reality, and we need to start preparing for the worst-case scenario. We aren't. What we're doing is that we're preparing for conditions as they are now and may be 100-year chance, not any further. These other places have been hit with 5,000-year events, some of them multiple times. Another message is, is that when I was growing up, Zorro was one of my heroes. I'm living in the land of Zorro. We need heroes like Zorro today. We need someone to come forward. They don't have to be just men anymore, they can be women. We can take and go solve some of our problems by people stepping forward to become the heroes that we need. Zorro had the same problems then, if you remember into those legends, the homelessness, the poor, and disenfranchised.
Thank you very much.
Let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Dr. Martinez?
I'm Dr. Martinez, I'm a retired physician, and I'm here because my colleagues aren't. And the reason my colleagues aren't here is because they're threatened by the medical board if they say anything. They're either threatened by the medical board or the people that employ them and have their paychecks threatened. So I put these numbers up here today, and I'm going to be discussing them because you folks are probably going to be coming down with a real important decision to make in the near future. You're going to have to decide whether to accept COVID money. It'll be coming down in probably October if you comply, because there's always a string attached to anything that's free. So I want to review the cost of compliance that we've paid, what we've paid in the last two, three and a half years for complying. All the data I present today is either from the Social Security Administration, insurance actuarial data, the CDC, or other agencies. And all the figures are US figures unless stated otherwise. So 20% is the deaths that have occurred in the United States from COVID, whereas, but we represent 4.3% of the global population. We were probably, we are not the most compliant, but we were the second-most compliant country in the world. Only Australia had more strict measures than we did. So in spite of all those strict measures, we still had 20% of the deaths. The things we did did not work. And I want to give you an example. This is not the US, but Cuba and Haiti both have 11 million people or so as their population. Cuba had an 87% vaccination rate and 8,500 COVID deaths. Haiti had a 1% vaccination rate and had 800 deaths. My point is, the vaccine didn't do squat to prevent deaths. Back to 20 again. 20 is the number, 20% is the increased all-cause mortality. That's 1.2 million non-COVID excess deaths since the shock came out. And I know one death is tragic, and 1.2 million is a statistic, but each of those people were people and should be valued each as tragically as we have been presented today with information from tragedies that happen locally. Additionally, 20 is the number of points in IQ that our children lost from being masked up and through the COVID lockdowns. 30 is the percent increase in disability claims, which is a one in a gazillion chance to have that much variance. That's from the shots. And 30% of children now need remedial reading assistance due to wearing masks. You have 42 muscles in your mouth, so excuse me, in your face, and you need those to understand things. And the 40 is for 40% of small businesses were closed.
Thank you very much.
Please do not accept this money.
Ken? Ken Layton?
The avocado festival in Fallbrook and this strawberry festival each draw about 100,000 visitors. The Carlsbad Village Fair is one of the largest street fairs in the country. Each city or town greatly benefits from people coming in and spending at hotels and restaurants. But each event is not put on by its host city, but by its Chamber of Commerce. For 60 years, we've had Harbor Days that celebrates our world-famous marina. Well, what do you know, after last year's Harbor Days, the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce just sort of lost interest. That's weak. But what is absolutely unacceptable is that the chamber never told anybody until a few weeks ago. Liz Rea, the chairman of the Harbor and Beach Commission, is outraged that the chamber could not have been bothered to tell the commission, or apparently the city at its August meeting, that Harbor Days this month, one month later, was canceled. This raised the question, what the hell is the purpose of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce? It is the only chamber in the county that gets free rent, and it's the only chamber of commerce that has a political pact that raises money and then contributes directly to specific council candidates. So just why did the council endorse and contribute to Weiss, Keim, and Robinson? Could there be some kind of quid pro quo that these three will vote for more free rent for the chamber when their gravy train lease is up in a few years? It's obvious, all the promotion for the city of Oceanside is now being done very well, by the way, by Visit Oceanside. The Oceanside Chamber of Commerce admits, admits in campaign filings that it uses its own in-house copier located at the property owned by the city of Oceanside to print political material for specific council candidates, as well as for developers who gave them money. The Oceanside Chamber of Commerce has tanked a 60-year tradition because it just didn't care anymore. If the chamber had have cared, it would have asked the community for a new sponsor. Liz Rea said, there are people out there in groups who would have been glad to step up. But no, the chamber is too busy promoting people like Howard Jacobs and the North River Farms, which was rejected by the voters two to one. The chamber is now nothing but a self-promoting political entity, and Councilmen Keim, Weiss, and Robinson are apparently all too ready to play along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosie?
All right, so I'm here on behalf of the children of Oceanside. So you guys are all working for the city, for the communities that you represent, that have voted you in. So I am here on behalf of families and children, asking you to put pressure on the Oceanside School Board. As you heard earlier by Todd Madison, they are really trying to discriminate, bully, harass us. They do not want to hear from parents in the community. So Alco, Alcoone Mayor Bill Wells, he did take a stand, he does have courage. He wrote a letter in an editorial to the San Diego News desk. "I am deeply concerned about the recent actions taken by the San Diego Unified School District regarding their name and gender instruction form. It is terrible to witness yet another example of school districts overstepping their bounds and assuming they know better than parents regarding their children's well-being. San Diego Unified School District is now actively encouraging children to identify as trans or non-binary and helping them keep it a secret from their parents. What kind of twisted logic is this? Since when did schools become the gatekeepers of such crucial information? Parents are now left in the dark about their children's lives. This is nothing short of an attack on parental rights, transparency, and common sense. The idea of hiding something as significant as a child's gender identity from their parents is an insult to the principles of family, trust, and open- from their parents is an insult to the principles of family, trust, and open communications. Parents have every right to be fully informed about their children's lives, especially concerning matters as personal and impactful as this." You get the gist of the letter. So my point is that we need your help as leaders in the community to help this out-of-control school board that has gone rogue and actually has a lot of animosity towards people that challenge their narrative. So I know three of you are up for reelection. Peter Weiss, Ryan Keim, and Mayor Sanchez. So we are looking for strong leaders that are going to protect the most vulnerable. They're being sexualized, indoctrinated. They're being taught that our country should be hated, they should hate their neighbors. That is not what our taxpayer money should be going to. It should be towards reading, writing, math, the Constitution, and history. And Eric Joyce, I'm sorry if I bored you, but this is a really important issue. I know that you were on the board, and you know many of the issues that are prevailing there. So, please take a stand for the children. That's who we want to vote for. We want to vote for bold, courageous leaders that are gonna stand up for our seniors, for our children. The children are our future, so let's do our part as adults and push back against all of this garbage. Thank you.
Patrick Gage?
So I just wanna kinda piggyback on that. Let me give you some, you know, we are asking you guys for help. You know, it says right up there, "Liberty in God we trust," city of Oceanside. So, "city of Oceanside" means you guys are in charge. Well, maybe not in charge, but you could have a say in the school district and say something. You know, you guys have kids, you might have grandkids going there. You might have, some of you probably put them in a private school because you know what's going on. But let me give you some numbers. 31% of students are proficiency in math. 31%, that's gone down since the tally took over in 18, it just keeps dropping. 51% are proficient in reading. I'm gonna go there and I'm gonna say it, so it's been dropping every year. These are the things that have been going on, okay? No more televised meetings, which means they're private. That's kinda weird, they want it all private now. Parents are limited to three minutes. So if they have a, if they have one or 40 topics, we got three minutes to talk on all 40 topics, and then three minutes at the end to put in a statement. That's kinda weird, that tells you they don't want parents to speak. They're hiring LGBT teachers with no credentials. That's going on there, I don't know if you guys know that, look into it. They hired Max Dispositi, who's the director of the LGBT Center in Oceanside, to teach teachers. You kinda see the route I'm going here? They allow rated R books that say, you know, "under 18 should not be reading these books" and "is against the law." Why do we have unlawful books in the libraries? See the trend I'm going here? I hope you guys are seeing, tying this together. Trying very hard to sexualize our kids, why would they do that? They're doing more to sexualize our kids than to teach them. It's obvious by the scores. Could they, I'm gonna go there, I am gonna go there. Could they be part of maybe the child sex trade going on? Could they be? Or could they be setting the kids up for that? Think about it. Are we setting ourselves up for another Hawaii? Where kids, they can't account for 200 or 300 kids? Is that gonna happen in Oceanside, on your guys' watch? On your guys' watch? And like my wife said, you know, you guys are coming up for election. If you don't stand for the families, and you know, I'm for kids, I'm for education, okay? I don't care if they're gay, straight, red, black, or white, or yellow. I don't care. They need to get a good education so they can get good jobs. Are we not America and want our kids to run this country and to, you know, qualify in the world? Do we not want that? So, take a stand, you guys, okay? Who will stand for the nuclear family and child rights? Who will stand? Who will stand, who will say something, who will get involved? Any of you? We know Joyce won because he didn't for two and a half years, all these meetings we were there. He never took a stand at all, he wasn't a man, he wouldn't do it. Okay? I'm asking you guys, the real men in here, take a stand for these kids. If you don't, then you're either a coward, or you made your choice.
Thank you very much. Susan Custer?
Good evening. Is it on? Yeah. Okay, as we hear that mask mandates are returning, I'm asking you to please ban mask and vaccine mandates, as Huntington Beach has done. Please make this city a no-mask, no-vaccine mandate city. Make a resolution declaring that Oceanside has a no-mask, no-vaccine mandate. This will protect the personal freedom of the local residents. If any business wants to require a mask to be admitted to their business, they of course should be allowed to do so. And of course, anyone who wishes to wear a mask and get vaccinated should do so. There are many studies which document the fact that masks do not stop the spread of COVID, and they do cause other health problems. A study published in the Journal of Echotoxicology and Environmental Safety states that masks pose no significant risk to wear, that's wrong. Masks pose significant risks to wearers because of toxins emitted by the tight-fitting face covers. One of the substances added to plastics to increase their flexibility, transparency, durability, and longevity can be inhaled, ingested, and absorbed through the skin. Exposure has been found to be detrimental to reproductive and neurological development. Frontiers in public health in April found the following negative impacts of both surgical and N95 masks. Decreased oxygen saturation, decreased minute ventilation, increased carbon dioxide in the blood, increased heart rate, blood pressure, and skin temperature, higher levels of discomfort, shortness of breath, headaches, acne, skin irritation, and dizziness. There are many studies that show that universal, universal school masking did lead to fewer cases, did not lead to fewer cases in schools, and it did great harm to the children. Some of the problems include such things as delayed speech, difficulty in reading social cues, and delayed social skills. This is just, this is just some of the problems with masking and does not even touch on the vaccine problems. So please, for the future of our city, our residents, and most of all our children, pass a resolution making masking oceans, making Oceanside a mandate-free city. If Huntington Beach can do it, so can Oceanside. Please think of the residents and the children and make it so that we, they can go to school without a mask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it. So we're now on item number 24, which is council member items. We do have, item 24 is a request by Councilmember Joyce and Councilmember Robinson to direct staff to draft an ordinance amending code, chapter 2.1.64, section G, regarding appointments of the city's representatives to a regional board or commission. Updated language should prohibit the appointment of a new council member to a board or commission before they take their seat on the council. Councilmember Joyce, Councilmember Robinson?
Just very briefly, this item is intended to correct, I think, what was, at least this time around, an accident where both Councilmember Robinson and myself were not sitting on the dais when we were appointed to regional appointments. Therefore, we didn't really have a voice in the conversation. And so, the idea is to change the date to the later date in December so that those appointments can be made if there are newly elected council members in the discussion. That would be the motion.
Okay, so it would be the second meeting in December versus the first, which would, which would then be consistent with every year?
That's what I understood, we just changed the appointment date to the second meeting in December.
All right. I'll second that. Councilmember Robinson?
Hit it. It's not my fault. I don't know if it's appropriate with this, or if we have to bring it up as a separate item, but reviewing the city code, I realized that the section right after what we were talking about dealt with the appointment of the deputy mayor also was in the, at the time of the first meeting. And I think if council agrees, or if it's not inappropriate, that we would change that also to the second meeting.
You could give that referral, I could make that change and bring it back to you.
Yeah, all the appointments.
So they're all done. Deputy mayor and the appointments are typically done at the same time, so.
Okay. No other requests to speak?
We do have a request to speak from a member of the public.
Jimmy.
Jimmy Knott.
I apologize, I didn't see you there.
That's okay. Yes, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. I wanted to ask a question on this motion. Does this prohibit the council from making a selection of a non-council member to be appointed to an outside commission? Like to the Water Authority? Where we had like Brian, you know, from the past, he was appointed to being one of the experts in the city, representing the city onto the commission down in San Diego? Or other experts in the city? Would this affect anyone that is an expert that the council may choose to be our representative that would serve our purposes? Because, you know, it would save the city finances and also save, as an example, there has been in the past a form of ambassador-type situation where there has been an experienced past council member appointed to an outside commission. And so, I know that is a long time ago, but as you know, I've sat here for over 30 years, and I've seen a lot. So I want to make sure that the city keeps open the doors so that we can take and get the best expert to help our city as long as they meet with you to make sure that they are expressing the councils and cities, you know, budgetary or, you know, goals and aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, this is just a timing issue. Councilmember Weiss?
That's all I was gonna say.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Now we have general council member comments. Councilmember Robinson?
Do it. I just wanted to say that for the council members that next week I'll be going to Sacramento for the Cal Cities Conference, and so.
Lucky you.
I know. If there's anything you want me to do, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanna say, yesterday was employee appreciation lunch day, and I just want, we have wonderful employees. Wanted to thank again, thank you to all of our city employees and staff and managers and everybody, directors, for the wonderful job that you're doing for the city of Oceanside. It was a great lunch from Hunters. Thank you, whoever made that decision, Mr. Marego. But it was really nice to see the employees all together and breaking bread and, and being appreciated, so, thank you. And I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn to the next meeting, which is Wednesday, September 27th, at 3:30 for closed session. Meeting adjourned.